Gale in the floor, or, sorry, I don't know who it was. There was two of them. And then some part. But we paid for this last month, so. It was already paid?
Yeah.
Okay.
They have some scale up at the Lincoln Park Manor or something?
They're the lifts, but I think they have scales on the lifts.
A lift, I see, probably, okay. Well, did you have a bad road and bad weather?
It, well, it wasn't too bad, I guess, but yeah, it drifts from our room pretty heavily, so that always poses a problem. But we actually had worse drifts with less snow around, what was it, Thanksgiving when we had that big? Rain down. Excuse me again?
No, pretty much.
Good bless you. Okay, I will call the meeting to order. Would you like to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? The Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America's stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in mind.
Thank you. So, correspondence, we have CASA. Are you familiar with CASA, Randy? Or am I saying it already CASA or CASA? I think it's CASA.
Oh, I've, not really.
So there are court-appointed advocates, child advocates, if they're, if the child is in a situation where they need to go, um, either into foster care or before the court, dealing with, um, home services, then you can sign out to be volunteer and CASA will assign each child an advocate. And then, they don't get paid for their time, but they do get mileage. And each county has a particular amount of cases, and I think last time, there was only one or two, there was only one or two volunteers in Lincoln County, so they came requesting that we make aware that you can volunteer for this program. And we give them, I don't remember what this year's budget was, it's several thousand dollars, I think, was it about seven thousand, six thousand maybe? Yearly, do you remember, Mr. Wallace, what the amount was?
I'm gonna have to look it up.
Yeah. So, and then what happens is, the person who fills this position, they're allowed to go to a court hearings and speak as far as what their perception was dealing with the issues up until that point of a court hearing. So they're, they're naming April as Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month. And usually, we do a resolution when they come in and they request that we acknowledge.
Are those attorneys that go to, just are any, any personnel?
Any person can volunteer.
Through whatever.
Right, and you're, you're supposed to be an advocate for the child.
Yeah.
So regardless of where they are in the process, at home or with foster care, you're able to go and meet with the child, talk to, a lot of times, they go to the visitations when the child gets to visit their parents, when they've been already taken from the home. And then, also, they can speak to the judge or during the hearings, as far as what they've witnessed in interactions and things like that, or things that the child may tell the CASA volunteer. So this is just an announcement of April being the Awareness Month for Child Abuse Prevention. And it's, you can order t-shirts, I guess.
Seven thousand dollars.
Seven? Okay, I wasn't sure what the amount was. Morning.
Do you think it's worthwhile for us to do that?
I really appreciate that program. Emotionally, I guess, in Lincoln County, we don't really use it very much. So basically, when we send our money into it, it's more or less being utilized elsewhere. Um, that could be something we could talk about in the future, for sure. They did get, you read the seven thousand, that would be for 2019, correct? Okay. And then this is from Dickinson County. To North Central Kansas County Highway Officials. Um, you're cordially invited to the 2019 Spring Meeting to be held in Abilene at Stirl Hall. And there's a contact, and it would be, um, on Wednesday, April 3rd. And we have some invoices. Assisted living lift station flooded. So a service call from Street Plumbing for ninety-seven dollars and fifty cents to Lincoln Park Manor. Lincoln Park Manor. A battery from High Tech Fire Alarm Sales. Um, a twelve-volt battery, a hundred, one hundred and thirteen dollars. Street plumbing, shower valve repair, sixty-five dollars for one hour of labor from Street. Is that a double? No, this is the ninety-seven fifty. Check to see if sewer was plugged and found that stool overflowed, stool was running. Okay, that's a separate one. Here's another one, service call, chapel furnace quit working, thirty-two dollars and fifty cents, it was the pilot light had gone out. Alliance Monitoring Technologies for Lincoln Park Manor, a three-V lithium battery power cell for one hundred and twenty-two dollars and sixty-five cents. Lincoln Building Supply. Entry lock, forty-two seventy-seven. Didn't we look at these last week? Forty-two seventy-seven for a lock, sixteen ninety-nine from Lincoln Building Supply for something called Polo, I don't know what that means. And then, this glass and the surface cleaner to Phoenix Supply. I would suggest we approve them, except for the, um, cleaning products, I feel that that should be the responsibility of the tenant. The other ones are fixed items to the building. And then there's the fuel bill from Home Oil for two hundred and eighty-five dollars and ninety-six cents to refill the generator. Any discussion on that matter?
You're saying we shouldn't pay the cleaning supplies, so, because that's a consumable that you should pay for?
That's my opinion.
But if we don't, uh, then it won't be paid, probably, huh?
That's, that's a potential issue, but I do believe that, um, Mr. Grace, who is running the operation, needs to handle his own finances, and if he refuses to pay his bills, then that needs to reflect on him and his operation, regardless of what happens. I don't feel like we should just be covering for him in the meantime. I will sign those, except for the cleaning supplies. Any discussion, objection, clarification? If not, I'll take care of this. If you'd like to review the minutes, does anyone have any questions, additions, corrections? On February nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen, we had a tax abatement, amount of forty-six thirty-six. We had correspondence from several individuals who signed from Golden Belt Valley and Indiana Townships regarding their roads and concerns about the oversight, or I should say, lack of oversight in the department. We did speak with Mr. Schneider and his attorney, Mr. Krangle, regarding the, um, Fiftieth Road Project for gravel. We met with Lincoln County Council on Aging, Lincoln Senior Center, and Sylvan Grove Senior Center. This is just a technicality, Dawn, but it is listed as the Sylvan Senior Center officially with the IRS, yeah, there's no Grove in it. I just happen to know that. I thought maybe it just got dropped off. Like the center gets dropped off of Lincoln. Right, right. What does this mean, the board forwarded the complaint letter, oh, the letter received earlier this date, I see what you're saying, earlier in the, in the meeting, okay. The one thing I, when I read through this, I thought it wasn't clear here, um, when we talked about, in the Highway Department, discussion about Mr. Schneider's agreement, the five thousand upfront, and then Schneider would provide materials for all future improvement, that was for a term of five years? Which was replacing the agreement that it was going to be a thousand dollars a year that the county would spend out of reserved funds provided by him. And this just didn't say anything about five years.
I think it also is, indicates we agreed to that, and we have not agreed to that, as far as I'm concerned. I think the direction was that Mr. Krangle was going to write up a, an agreement.
So Dawn, maybe you could go up a sentence, and after the discussion, it was determined that Schneider, an attorney, would formulate an agreement which required him to pay? Does that sound, like you could fit that in there? I do agree, it was a discussion.
And I think we also can't make any decision until we see the cost from the County Highway Department, too, we haven't gotten that yet, or I haven't received it.
Okay, I did not receive anything.
So, which?
You have, after-
After lengthy discussion, it was determined that Schneider would formulate an agreement?
I don't think the committee needs to be even in there, myself. I think he, they were going to formulate an agreement, and we were going to look for the cost of the material. Highway Department's gonna provide us one.
I think the point of contention has always been, what has everybody agreed to and what have they not? And apparently, my, that and my minutes have not, have never been out of it, because nobody agrees with anything that's been in them. So I, I thought we probably ought to be as detailed as possible, but I don't know that.
No, what you put in the minutes is what was discussed, except you put about the future materials, and that was for a term of five years.
Okay.
But I agree, if Mr. Wallace wants it to say that it was proposed, that an agreement be brought forth with that in it, that's fine, instead of just saying that it was already agreed upon.
After, or, after lengthy discussion, it was determined that Schneider would formulate an agreement which would require?
Him, him to pay, him to pay, what you have upfront. And then, would provide for all future materials. Or, I'm sorry, future improvement, you have, I would actually change that to materials, though, because that, instead of improvement.
I put, I have materials that had, provide materials for all future improvements.
I'm sorry.
For five years.
Oh, you're right, okay, materials for all future improvement, yes, for five years. Thank you.
And we have to remember, there's already a motion that has been approved for, I think it was sixteen thousand or something, that regardless of what is done, that motion either has to be rescinded.
The motion to approve the agreement that we signed with?
No, there was a motion on the table that, that said that they would, that was approved. Aljo, can you help me with it? I meant to look it up, but I think Aljo approved, or moved, and Terry seconded, or vice versa. But that would have to be rescinded regardless.
That was, that I would pay ninety percent of the cost of all, everything, you can't have a fifteen percent.
I was thinking it was like sixteen thousand.
Yes, and that, but that should have been rescinded then, when we did the mediation, because that happened before the mediation.
Well, we never reached an agreement with mediation, so none of that has ever been rescinded.
But we agreed to sign the mediation, I mean, I, well, yeah, I did, I did vote for that, I think. But we, we agreed to the mediation letter that came back from Verishite, and the other party did not. I think that's how that happened.
The agreement has never been signed by anybody. The mediation agreement was presented to them, and they never approved it. I don't believe, I'll make search.
I think you're right, Dawn.
So we received the agreement, and we never made a formal motion to accept the agreement either. So neither party accepted the agreement, we just received the agreement.
Because I think it was still back and forth, back and forth, what was in the agreement, so.
Okay.
And I, I'll search it, but regardless, I think we'll have to clean some of, up.
Okay.
At some point in time.
Okay, if you would let us finish the minutes, and then we'll come right into your portion of your, um.
Okay, so I, I have, it reads, after a lengthy discussion, it was determined that Schneider would formulate an agreement requiring him, sorry.
Uh-huh.
Him to pay five thousand dollars upfront, Schneider would provide materials for all future improvements for a period of five years.
Yes. That is what was discussed.
Subject to approval by the Highway Department prior to being applied to the service. And if, if you guys don't like, after a lengthy discussion, it was determined, we can just, that, that the discussion was, was held, that Schneider would formulate and strike.
I think determined needs to go out, because it sounds like we have agreed to that, and we haven't.
She, but what she corrected is that we agreed that he would bring forth this proposal, and that was what was discussed, to be the proposal. That is what we're, that's what the sentence says, we determined.
Yeah.
But now that you corrected that wording, do you want to hear it again?
After a lengthy discussion, it was determined that Schneider would formulate an agreement requiring him to pay five thousand dollars upfront, and Schneider would, would provide materials for all future improvements for a period of five years, subject to approval by the Highway Department prior to being applied to the service.
I would agree with that.
So the determined was about the agreement.
We determined that he would come up with, because I asked, would you like to do the agreement, or, yeah, and you decided that that would be okay, so that's why you're here today, correct?
That's correct.
Isn't that all right with everyone?
I, I would not, I will not accept the five thousand dollars.
No, but I'm saying, we, just the minutes, forget the-
No, I will not accept the minutes, because I do not believe this board specifically said five thousand dollars. I think that was your number.
That is what I proposed, based on the Verishite agreement.
That is what you proposed, but I did not ever agree to that.
Okay, but right now, we're just talking about what happened in the minutes, as far as what the discussion was, and that is the discussion. There were no other numbers thrown out in the meeting, so.
That's true.
I'm just looking for approval for the minutes. We can have our total discussion about the actual numbers as soon as we do the minutes. So I'm just looking for the, the minutes to be accurately reflecting what happened last week. I would say what Dawn has, is at this point accurate. Are there any other additions or corrections or discussion for the minutes? If not, I would undertake a motion to approve February nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen, County Commission Minutes.
I still move to move approval.
I'll second. Any further discussion? If not, those in favor, vote aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
One opposed, motion carried. Okay, that was just for the minutes, now if you would please come forward, we could discuss the proposition. Thank you. Excuse me one moment, I just realized, Dawn, that needed to be as corrected. that this, I don't know the word, um, negates is the word that's coming to mind, but negates any prior agreement, consideration, is that in there?
I think it is there, acknowledged, and so the parties on the second page.
Which paragraph do you?
The second one, all prior negotiations and agreements proposed or otherwise.
Once you've addressed it.
Written or oral.
Oh, supersede, oh, okay, there we are, that's, there you go, supersede, all prior, written or oral, okay, that's what I was looking for, thank you.
This is based largely off what Jennifer wrote two years ago. It changes, you know, some of the language and clarifies a great deal. I wasn't able to reach Jennifer, she's busy. And I tried again this morning, and she's still busy. But if you have any questions, I think this, it pretty much says what was said before.
On, when you were talking before, I was kind of re-looking through this, and the number two responsibility, me, on the first line, says I would be responsible for deciding where renewed materials were needed, but I'd put, I would put it there with the approval of the county. County.
You have the County Highway.
County Highway Department, yes, I would.
You gotta, you gotta coordinate with them.
I'm not coordinating with them, but that, it'd be about putting where the material goes, and when, or where the material goes, I would need to, you know, get approval from them, saying, you know, I think it needs to be here, or whatever.
Now, previously, a year or two ago, the way they were doing some work, you had an issue with, sometimes, with something they were doing, right? How do we prevent that from happening again? Because they could be not putting that gravel on there the way you like it, Steve, but then what are we gonna do? We gonna be right back here again?
Oh, I hope not, I, they know how, you put gravel on a road, you spread it, and-
Yeah, I know, but-
And I, I would hope that they would, you know, do some of the things that you've talked about, blending something, whether to make it better, like other counties do, and not just be clay, but give it substance.
I just want to make sure that doesn't happen again, because, you know, we, we want to make sure, if, if we've approved this, we have approved this, like Aljo said, we haven't agreed to nothing yet, but if that would happen, I'm just, want to make sure that we have, you're kind of gonna have to go along with what they do here. And I know, that, you know, that's one issue, we don't want that to come back again, because that's what started this whole mediation problem, right? Yeah, that's all I'm saying.
And just some further clarification on how that happened. You came out and looked at the site with Michael, correct? When, when you talked about when it was going to be graded?
We met, yeah.
Okay, so when the county actually went there with the equipment, the machinery, the, the personnel, Bob went, and Michael was not there.
Correct.
And Bob came in the meeting, and he said, "Well, I graded it up just like I would grade up any road." And that is where the discrepancy was, because it, the agreement wasn't that the entire section was going to be graded, because I had driven on it prior to that. There were rock ledges, so to speak, where it was packed in already, and there was hard surface that didn't necessarily need to be disturbed. So when you grade that entire thing, and turn, churn it and churn it, it softens everything and kind of-
Well, and also, I think they ditched some, they cleaned out the ditches, which are the policy from KDOT, Bob said. But the trouble is, there's dirt in there, you add existing gravel, and it doesn't seem like you should be putting dirt on gravel, and I know maybe that's what intended that way, but that made the road levels worse.
Bob was not, Bob was not aware of any part of the agreement evidently.
Bob just came out to do his job, as he saw it when he got there.
Yeah.
But he was not there for the discussion, and Michael did not come on the day that they did the work.
Okay.
So you had two different leaders, one making the agreement, and the other one doing the work.
Okay.
And so that's how that originally got misconstrued, and where we got to the point where we did the mediation, and then, and I understand what your interest was in mediation is to protect your finances, so that five thousand dollars that you were providing upfront was not then owed back to you, and, and/or not put in the form of materials over those next five years. So at this point, my suggestion is, based on that same agreement, it becomes your responsibility then, and you don't need to invest that money in the county and hope that we do with it as you would see fit.
That is correct. There's a, under the terms of this agreement, Steve will not recommend something to be put somewhere that's not going to do any good, because he's gonna have to pay for that. And that's the check and balance. Is there anything in here that needs further elaboration?
According to the responsibilities of the county, again, all that we're, county is going to do is then, purchase hauls, spread appropriate service materials on the road, right, gravel.
Gravel.
We're not, no culverts, no, uh-
Don't need anything, it's all been done.
It's all been done, okay. We, nothing else besides that, right?
And it has a super concrete bridge, that never, our lifetime, never needed to be touched.
That's right, before the draft, that goes off the forty-fifth, right?
If we approve this, I just want to say that that's what's all gonna be done, and that, we don't want to come back six months and say we need, uh, some other apparatus that's gonna cost five grand, that part of this, that's, you know, okay.
If I may make a suggestion, it would behoove you to show up when the work is being done. I only say that because- I only say that because of what has happened in the past, you know? And I guess if you're there to witness with your own eyes and maybe have a conversation with any or all of the operators that are there at the time, that way if something is going on that doesn't seem kosher, you can just address it in the moment.
And that's a fair idea, that's a good idea. I think before the county went out at a time that you didn't know they were going to be there. There was communication that way as well, so...
And I know, you know, the greater operators from Vic Bob, Winkler over there. And Winkler was out Sunday running, I assume it was Winkler, I didn't see him, pushed some snow off and stuff. Appreciate him being out on Sunday, you never know when they're gonna...
I guess if we're gonna proceed on this any further, we need to have our attorney review it, right? Jennifer and our Highway Department. Like Al Joe was saying, we need to have to come up with maybe the value or whatever, protective materials or whatever we may have to, what it would cost and stuff. Whether that was part of our discussion, I think, last week, right? So we need to deal with them here before we can do anything more today. At least my opinion anyway, I don't know about Al Joe and Alexis, but...
I would say we could just forward this and have it looked at by our county attorney for...
And the Highway Department needs to... I don't know if they'd coordinate with the county attorney and what, if that, they need to be involved on, you know, input on this, you know? Should Michael or Bob have input on what to do with, what we ought to do here?
I think what's not specified in here would be the depth of the material, you know? Or the quantity of material, that's really not specified, so...
It's specified in the sense that it becomes an all-weather road. If you don't put enough, or if you put too much, or if you put the wrong stuff on, it doesn't do any good. You don't want to just have a bitter dirt road.
I understand that, but in the interest of clarification and not of discrepancy in the future, if they go and put two inches on and then you come back in three months and say it's sunk in and it's now covered in, it's, you know, dug into the clay, three inches now, I think we need at least some sort of maybe idea of quantity of material.
In the pricing structure they used before, they were talking three inches material.
I remember that.
Is what it specified, yeah. Never inch, never inch more, add so many more tons or costs to it per mile.
Well, Michael and Bob, I guess we're coming in at 11:00, so maybe we could question them about this.
Figures for us, maybe with the... Yes, comment?
Is this just on 50th Road or is this on 45th Road too?
Both.
Both?
Both.
Both roads?
To Sean's house driveway.
So is this private road or public road?
It's public road.
So the 45th is public road?
45th is 45th.
At one time, you said something about wanting to close.
One time, yeah.
But that's been withdrawn.
Yes, I just mentioned that.
So that is a, that is a dead end, then at your, no, it goes on to?
Probably those people come, Ray and Max Keller come through, get one. Those people come through that road, yeah.
Right. What is the east and west road above that? It actually connects from...
Wheat Drive.
It connects from 50th to Wheat, at an angle.
If you would like us to be back here at 11:00, we can do that.
I don't know that that would be necessary because we, number one, we have to discuss with the attorney. County attorney has to be involved in this. So, I mean, we have your agreement, as far as I'm concerned. We will forward it to the county Highway Department for their comments and we will forward it to the county attorney for her comments and we will probably meet with her and discuss the terms of this. I think there are some, I have some questions of what we might be doing here.
I have not given a copy to Jennifer yet because I haven't seen her. But I will make sure she gets, she or Katie will get a copy.
And I'm not sure how, when she'll be available to us because she's involved in a pretty significant case, I think, right now. That may last, but sometime.
Yes, I think the last two references are on the stand this morning.
The last two?
Unless somebody changes their mind. So hopefully by the end of the week, it'll be all the way. And we can come back next Monday if you wish.
Now, I don't think there's any way we'll be, have met with her before then.
I don't think we need to meet with her, I think we just need to send it to her.
No, I, we need to meet with her. We, she needs to come and discuss it with us and we need to discuss with her.
Seems pretty clear cut to me. I don't know what legally there would be to question, except...
The one addition that Steve suggested, I think, is a good one. We're not trying to undermine the county Highway Department. We want the coordination to be there.
Yeah, I think that's, if we proceed with this, yeah, I'd like to have this coordinated so that you know what they're doing and, you know, and they can coordinate with you. Not that you're gonna tell them what to do because that's, but you can work with them and, you know, common sense here.
You drove there and looked at the road there? Mr. Wallace, have you been out there to see it?
Not recently, no.
Yeah, Steve, I went two weeks ago. Steve showed me where it was and what they'd already done to county and then he took me to the hunting lodge, which is nice and seems like he's had a lot of business there, so that's good for the county. Then showed his son's place and then kept driving north where he could come in from the north and some other roads. Yeah, so he showed it to me, so... And we've, the county's done considerable work already on some of that, so...
Right.
You know, it was graded as Bob says it, as it was going to be gravelled, is what his exact comment was.
Yeah, yeah.
That's how we graded it, you know, how we prepared it.
But I, yeah, I...
And at that time, you were actually proposing that you may not use all gravel material. That's why the grading was to be selectively done in certain spots. So there has been some back and forth as far as how things were done or why and some miscommunication by making the agreement with one department head and then having the other supervisor go out and actually perform the job, you know? You may not do it the same as I, so if I make the agreement, I shouldn't really send you, but, you know, those are some internal structural things that we need to deal with. As far as the agreement goes, you know, the county, the loss to the county is the fact that we are now paying out twice as much for gravel. But that was our decision. And I will say that you've obviously spent time and expense to have representation. You paid for half the mediation that we did. I mean, you have put forth your own effort and financial investment into the entire process. I'm gonna go back and say that we've done jobs and projects for other individuals where their homes were put in on a road that needed upgraded and we did that at the county's expense multiple times. And if now this commission has an issue doing that, then we need to address our own problem, which is our own resolution. And I don't think we can really hang someone, some individual out to dry on our malfunctions and inability to proceed with our own procedures and setting our own guidelines and restricting ourselves or putting forth actual documentation that shows what we will or will not do. You know, if we continue to just leave this up to a negotiation process every time, we've been two years into this. I would like to see us address the real issue, which is our own paperwork. So maybe we can put that on the agenda.
I agree though with Al Joe that we need to talk maybe with Jennifer and Highway Department before we can proceed further. I have my opinion with him on that. Because, you know, we want to make sure Jennifer agrees with this or reviews it, whatever, in my opinion. So I don't know when that'll be because I know she's busy on another case, so...
Well, she's emailed, I mean, multiple documents. I have, we have an entire folder from the attorney we've hired on Topeka. I don't see how it could be a problem to just email her the document and receive some input that way. We're dealing with a multi-hundred thousand dollar project through email. I think we can deal with this as well. If Mr. Wallace would like to meet with her personally, I mean, I know where I'm from with that, but I don't think it hinges on that.
Does anyone know when she would be available?
We'll just have to put in a request. Dawn, would you mind asking the county attorney to respond to us with a time that she might be willing to discuss this? And did you have this electronically, that we could just forward it to her?
You need to revise it just a little bit, a couple of things. Typographical things we need to...
Yeah, I could work with Katie directly if you want.
Sounds good, man. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next we have Dawn on the agenda.
One of them, Michael kind of talked to you guys about last week. It's the mail on the repowering project. I kind of didn't even think about forwarding this email to you guys or providing it to you, but they are working on repowering this Milky Hills Wind Farm 1 and 2, so both phases. And this is what, kind of what Michael was talking to you about, so...
So access driveways and access roads are not county roads though, correct? Doesn't that refer to the private?
Correct. So, and actually, we have no permitting because we're not zoned to county. We do have where we issue out moving permits and I'm not really sure why moving permits was never really addressed in the previous, with the previous projects, either of the projects, or all three of the projects. But technically, anytime that somebody utilizes our roads, that they're hauling normal than, heavier than normal loads, they're required to pay a $25 moving permit fee and we're required to issue them a permit. Now, I kind of told him that we didn't really even discuss this last...
Time around.
Last time, yeah. So I don't know if when they're doing the road maintenance agreement, whether or not we want to address it at that point in time, if we want to assess them a $25 per load fee or if we want to just... I don't really know what you guys want to do or if you even want to do anything, but...
Well, out of curiosity, I, one of my concerns would be the bridges. I mean, do we know or do we have any recollection, idea, documentation from last time, what they may be crossing that is not rated at that capacity?
The last time what they did was they drove all the roads and they videoed everything that they drove on precondition and then anything that they needed to improve, they improved their costs or they paid the county to do so. I kind of asked the guy a couple of questions about that and I think their intent would be that they would like to have a road maintenance agreement, which I'm assuming would follow along the same details. Of course, it's kind of up to us. You guys are sitting as a different board than what we did the last time. I don't think we had a problem with the last time that I know of, but I don't know everything. I did pose him a bunch of questions that I had posed in my office and he has replied. I didn't print those out because I just saw them before I come down here. But they, currently, the fan blades, they want to be recycled, so they're hoping to lead the industry in that aspect of it. As he said, that I quickly kind of glanced at.
Do you know what that means?
I do not, but that should mean that it's not going to go into our landfill, hopefully.
Yeah, a question, yeah?
Yeah.
We did this and checking on that. What they do is they cut them up and recycle and haul them off so the blades won't be anywhere around here.
You're saying the recycling process means they're gonna dismantle them and take them all away?
Yes. And they're not toxic, they're not anymore toxic than fiberglass stop tanks or whatever.
He said as of right now that they intend to bid, have the contractor, that be a requirement, the disposal of everything is a requirement of the contract and that they do it under recycling mannerisms. But he said most of them tend to haul them off and haul and not do anything with them.
I guess I'm just saying, let's say we have a bridge that's rated at capacity that is lower than what they're gonna be hauling over. One thing is we can say, oh, well, it was posted. But the other thing is if we know they're coming in, we're agreeing to knowing that that's, I mean, are we putting ourselves in a liability jeopardy is all I'm bringing up? Because we have so many bridges that are in disrepair at this point.
I think the previous time they traveled around those areas. So if there was a bridge...
They mark them for sure to know, okay.
So what I proposed to the gentleman, of course, he said that he is only the permitting person, but he CC'd a whole bunch of people. But what I kind of proposed was that maybe we have either a telephone conference with them or an in-person meeting with them so that way you guys could maybe think about some questions that you have and ask. I did ask him specifically what the repowering meant and he said moving, removing the, like the towers themselves won't be replaced, but any mechanical portion of it will be replaced. Fan blades and the whole rotor system. So, but nonetheless, do you guys have an interest in that? Do you care?
I do. I would like to specifically ask the question I was just talking about. Other than that, I mean, I don't see why we can't have a pretty generic road maintenance agreement that they will be responsible for doing it, you know, on their own.
How do you guys feel about moving permits? Do you want to require them to have moving permits to bring that heavy equipment in? Yay, nay? Do you want a part of the road maintenance agreement where it's built in a flat fee?
Do they have liability insurance? So if they have some of the big equipment here and damage something, that they pay?
I think that's what the road maintenance agreement will do is say...
It'd lock that in and enforce that. That would be the only thing I can think of where, because they have this huge equipment, you know, they may have possibility of something going wrong or bad or break or... Like Alexis said, as long as they don't, that stuff must weigh a lot, obviously, that they don't damage our bridges.
How about this? I will still work towards scheduling something. Do you care if it's by telephone conference?
That would be fine.
Okay. Because I'm assuming some of these people are from all over the United States, if they're even in the United States. Okay. I will just plan on doing that. You guys start thinking about questions you want to ask. I will also try to forward you our current road maintenance or what our road maintenance agreement was at the time that the units were built originally. Okay. The other thing I want to talk to you about is something that I kind of discovered. What?
We also, that, pilot agreement does enter in here to repower, right?
Yes. So I relooked at the wording and it said that if the units were repowered, that the year that the repowering was complete, that they would increase it back to the original project level of what it was for the first 10 years. So, so project level number one would be the 200,000 with the stipulation that a percentage of it, a certain percentage, go to the schools.
And that, there wasn't an extension? And when we wrote that agreement, the repowering didn't extend that agreement or did it? Do you remember?
I don't believe it did.
I don't think it did either. I think it was just a 10-year.
I can look at that. Well, I can, I can, I'll print you out and I'll look forward.
But I thought, I thought the repowering was, went in in, or I mean, 10 years. It was just a 10-year agreement.
Yeah.
With the increase in repowering during that, but it would not extend the agreement.
Yes, and the stipulation for the thirty-five percent to the schools is still a whole, whole par, so. So even if it pushed back up, it still had stipulated how much?
Yes.
Okay, so the other thing that I need to talk to you about is kind of basically personnel, and I really need executive session. I think that I can generalize it, and then you guys can decide if it needs to be, but it concerns personal use of county-owned vehicles, and it concerns the time in which is considered work time. And what is considered personal use of vehicle and.
Well, let's talk general policy first, before we go into executive session.
Okay, so I did email this to you guys, but I'm providing you the printed copy, but I kind of discovered on a particular employee's time card that something looked a little awry, and so I asked the employee specifically, are you putting down time from the time you leave your home to the time that you get home? And he said, yes, he was. And I said, well, why are you doing that? And he says, because you provide us a county-owned vehicle. You provide me a county-owned vehicle and you, um, pay the sheriff's deputies from the time that they leave their home. Well, this, the problem is, is we have two other employees that have uh, county-owned vehicles that we do not pay from the time that they leave. They're not required to pay them from the time that they leave their home. They're only required to be paid from the time that they actually physically get to work. So this one here is the one that talks about, so on the right-hand column, the first one, seven eighty-five point three-five, is the home-to-work. I did go ahead and put out a WAN. I've been thinking about this for quite some time, because time on the time card wasn't really necessarily matching up with the time when they're in the building. And, um, I did go ahead and put out a WAN when I, I asked the employee this last week, so I really didn't want to just keep putting it off. But, and I know that, that Susan Lang has been out here now three times to audit us since I've worked for the county. And she works with the federal labor since Fairly Rising Standards.
What's her name?
Act. Her name is Susan Lang. I actually thought she'd have retired.
Lang, like L-A-N-G?
E on the end. And, um, we, at the time, were providing a county-owned vehicle to the highway department personnel, and she audited that part of it, and we were never, you know, penalized and said we were supposed to be providing it. So when I sent out the WAN to the employee, uh, to the other counties, one specific county sent me this and said, they specifically asked this question. Because we provide the vehicle, do we need to provide them time? And she said, no, and she pointed them to this reg that's the work, uh, home-to-work ordinary situations. So basically, what it says, any employee that who travels, um, from work, from home before his regular workday and returns to his home at the end of the workday is engaged in ordinary home-to-work travel, which is normally incident of the employment. This is true whether he works at a fixed location or at a different job site. Normal travel from home to work is not considered work time. So the situation that I have is either we're treating one employee differently than we're treating the other two employees. We only have three employees that have personal-owned vehicle, or county-owned vehicles besides deputies. There is an exception to law enforcement. So in the next page, no, the, the second aspect of it is, is I don't believe the one individual's vehicle qualifies for the exception to not be considered um, taxable on their fringe benefits. So, for example, the highway department employees that are provided their vehicles, that they are currently being taxed for personal use of the vehicle. So they have to report to us what the personal use is, so that's the mileage to and from their homes to get to work.
Let me ask it this way, do, okay, I'm assuming that all of the sheriff's department vehicles clock mileage?
They do, and they are truly exempt.
Right, so do all the other county-owned vehicles do mileage reports?
Yes.
Okay.
Although one department, I'm not provided with that, but I believe he does. I don't know that for sure, but. The highway department, I, I know, because we're taxing them for it.
Right.
The other vehicle, a previous employee that was in the position got this board to determine that he was considered a public officer. And so therefore, a public safety officer specifically. And so therefore, they chose to exempt the vehicle. I do not believe the employee meets the guidelines.
Well, let me ask this. Of the county employee vehicles that are being paid for outside of the sheriff's department, are any of those responding to events that are not during the workday? Or, or if they are, how often?
I don't believe very often, but I don't know that. But just because they're, they may respond, let's say, to an emergency situation, does not mean they still fit the guidelines.
No, I understand that.
Exempt for personal use. That just means that they can utilize that.
At that time, for that purpose. Well, that's kind of my question. I mean, if we're providing supervisory personnel vehicles to travel back and forth from work, but they're never using those vehicles to leave their home and go directly to the job site, then why wouldn't we just have the vehicles on-site and make them travel back and forth to work, and then use their vehicle once they're at work time? I mean, to me, that just seems like a logical, across-the-board solution to any problem that we may have now or in the future. I mean, a perk of a job may be a vehicle, but usually that comes with on-call time or overtime requirements that are more often than not, you know, not just like once a year that that may happen, where you leave your house and go directly to the job site. We don't have a county policy that you.
We don't technically have a county policy, no. And I know that there's a, I believe there is a motion that the emergency manager's vehicle is exempt, but I don't believe that we are following federal law, and I believe if Susan Lang came in here and audited us today, we would be, um, in trouble with that. And what happens is then the employer knowingly is not assessing him personal use, then you become liable for the taxes for that individual. And so I just don't, I just don't see how, I mean, I, I'm looking at the definition of public safety officer, and it just does not fit. He's serving in an individual.
If the following apply, must be always on call, required by the employer to use the vehicle, employer must prohibit personal use, and it is readily apparent by words or painted insignia that the vehicle is a public safety vehicle.
And a public safety officer is defined as an individual serving a public agency in an official capacity with or without compensation as a law enforcement officer, which that is not true, or a firefighter, chaplain, or a member of rescue squad or ambulance crew.
Well, I'm supposed to get.
Well, the one issue here is if, if he was at home, we had some major emergency in this county, then he, then it would apply to him.
Yeah, well.
That'd be the only time.
That would be the time when it's not considered personal use, when he's responding from his phone to an incident.
So what do you do about that case?
Well, we need to do one of two things. Either we need to decide whether or not the vehicle should actually be being utilized to go home and used for, for personal use, and if that is your desire, then we need to have him start tracking his personal use mileage, and we need to start assessing him similar to what we are assessing the highway department personnel. Or, like you said, change the entire policy for personal use vehicles completely. The other aspect of it is, is we need to define what is his work time and what is not his work time. And if, if we're gonna pay him from leaving his home to when he gets back to his home, then we need to be paying the highway department employees the same way. Or we need to be, we have to be treating them equally. I did not realize that we were not treating them equally. I kind of had garnered it a little bit when some of the time cards said he was here until four, and I knew he wasn't here until four, but I couldn't quite figure it out.
Well, I think this.
But I don't think that's necessarily his fault.
But this plays into the need for universal time card. It really does. Or a time-cloaking system, a mechanism by which to track time that is external of the individual's, you know, calculation, because we don't have any kind of unified system, and the only exemptions truly are those who are working twenty-four-hour shifts right now and/or are called out on specific duties when they're not already on the clock. So those can be handled individually from someone actually tracking their time with some sort of uh, software system, however we decide to do that. I think that needs to be implemented here this year. Did you have, did you have any more correspondence with contact as far as what they're?
I have not. They gave me the name of the company and the contact. I just need to get them contacted.
Okay.
Does, um, do they give opinions? What, does Susan Lang, is there a place that we can get opinions?
Um, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I could call her and ask her. The, the question is, is, I really thought she was.
Wouldn't our hiring company know that?
Well, I talked to him about it, and he said, you can do more.
We can make our own exemptions and provide certain things, but what we need to do is have something across the board, I think.
Yes, that's treating everybody fairly, and, and I don't feel like I'm treating everybody fairly, or, or assessing them the same. And so it, it's just a matter of, do you, do you trust me to ask her? She'll always say, I, I'll be honest with you, she'll tell you, you need to contact your county, legal counsel about it.
And I didn't know if they had a legal service that, that they, you actually could call, like, we do at K-CAM.
Um, no, a lot of times what she does is she tells you what reg it is, and then she can't tell you whether or not you need to follow it.
She won't tell the interpretation.
Yeah, um, and that's something I could, I could always contact contact, or contact. Sorry, too many acronyms. K-CAM attorney assists and asks them if they have had any experience and what they would determine, but, um...
Other counties must have the same problem.
The majority of the counties that I, that responded to me said they don't provide a vehicle to their emergency manager anymore for that aspect, that they provide a vehicle that they can respond, they come to work, they respond from work. That they just don't do that. The ones that do, they tax them for the personal use of their vehicle. Not a single one of them have responded to me that has said they have not done either of those things.
Aside from equipment that we own, meaning the ambulances and whatever other equipment, uh, how many vehicles do we actually have? We have two pickups that belong to the highway department.
Yes.
We have a third pickup that belongs to the emergency management department.
Yes.
And then we don't own the county buses. The health department has one vehicle that's an SUV, I believe, right?
Yes.
So.
We have a lot more vehicles than that on the vehicle schedule, but, 'cause you have fire trucks. But if you're asking, how many vehicles do we have?
Available for personal use that the county owns, that an individual may use at any given time.
We have three that are available for personal use. The health department vehicle is not available for personal use.
Well, I mean, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to say by, by personnel, available to personnel, is it, I'm sorry, I didn't mean personal use, but.
Yeah.
I, what other vehicles are there?
Well, you have every fire truck. The, the highway department has, um, vehicles that are at their shops that they use to drive back and forth. I mean, I don't know what you're.
I'm saying.
'Cause it's easier for me if you just say, how many vehicles do you have that are available for somebody?
Not the highway department, and we know there's one for emergency management, and we know there's one for the health department. What else?
Not the highway department. The county van out, that's parked outside.
Which van?
Uh, it's a Ford Explorer. No, an Explorer Windstar, yeah.
Okay.
Sitting out here most of the time, sometimes has a flat tire. Um, the Noxus Week Department has a couple of vehicles that they spray with.
Spray truck, okay.
That they can drive.
There's more than one?
There's two.
I was only aware of the one, okay.
There's two. The highway department has several service trucks. Outside of them, though, I don't know. Fire departments all have vehicles that we insure.
Okay, but that's it. I mean, basically, it's the county van that sits here. There's no other county-owned vehicle that is just in the general
The, um.
pot, so to speak.
The recycling center has a Suburban that used to be the highway department's that we sold, but they never did come and pick up, but they paid us for it. That we still have sitting there, but it's not really worthy of even.
Does it run?
Not really.
No one's been using it?
Unless you want to count the exhaust fumes that comes inside the, the vehicle, so. No, it hasn't been used for years, but it's there.
Okay, and are we, are we tracking mileage on the Noxus Week Department? Vehicles?
I believe they are. I, I shouldn't say that, but I believe they are.
Okay. Well, in the interest of time, since we have the highway department here, could we have you come back to the table, because I have a few things I wanted to go over to? But Bob and Michael, if you're ready, we'll have you. Sure, if, if we get up five minutes, and then, and then we'll move on with your scheduled time here. I'm going to let the county highway department know about this meeting in Abilene. Would either of you like to attend? It's a Thursday at nine AM.
I can't, I'm out of town.
Okay.
I'm gonna be out of town Thursday, too, did I tell you?
This Thursday?
Yes, I won't be able to make.
This is April.
Oh, that's April?
This is April.
Oh, I may then, okay.
Okay.
Well, I.
They're, they're gonna take a head count, and it just wants, you know, they just want to know a number for planning for their.
Okay, I don't know.
Okay.
I can't.
Okay.
This is just about highway department.
Oh, wait, I put April thir-, it's April third, it's a Wednesday, I said four. It is basically, it's their, um, North Central Kansas County Highway Officials Association. So it's kind of like a subsidiary of Kansas Association of Counties, and these are the minutes from their last meeting. But there are a lot of people there who are very helpful. I met Norm Bowers, I don't know if he was there. I don't know if he's still gonna be there this year. But this Randall Allen, he is no longer the director of the KAC, but he was there. Norm Bowers is the engineer for KAC, he was there. Um, and I didn't go to this one last year, but it just, this is the minutes from what happened. So I'll start off, I don't know if you'd received an email or anything, Michael, but the, um, Dickinson County sent out their notice for the meeting, the annual meeting for the North Central Kansas County Highway Officials Association, and that was scheduled to be the third of April. So you don't need this, you have it?
Yes, we have.
Okay.
Do you, do you attend that? Typically, we do, yes. What do they talk about?
Oh, usually have some guest speakers, usually from, uh, KDOT, there'll be somebody there. Norm Bowers always gives a speech from the Kansas Association of Counties and some general information along those lines. Usually get a update from the KDOT, who's usually one of the big topics, see what their standing is, where funding's going for the year, and things like that.
So we had some issues about how to collect concerns, you know. So we had some issues about how to collect concerns, you know, when people call in for what's going on with their road or an issue that they have. You know, they need a culvert replaced or something was damaged or needed repaired. And I had suggested to Michael that he get with Norm Bowers because he was heading up some of the highway department issues for Kansas Association of Counties. And Norm gave us a form that is their standard complaint form that they use. You know, you date the time and the location and where and who called and what the issue is, et cetera. And then I think it even indicates whether or not it had even been followed up on. And for some reason, our department has deemed it, um, too cumbersome to fill out this form. And I'm not sure exactly why. Maybe you could explain, because Randy's new. I mean, I've heard it as far as why that hasn't been done or why it hasn't been adopted, but maybe you could re-explain that?
Oh, it's just a pretty lengthy form and the way we've been doing it doesn't seem to be an issue where every phone call gets logged, wrote down. And the issue gets brought up to either myself or Bob and then it's wrote down at our desk and taken care of.
I find it interesting that you would say it's not an issue. A few months ago, Mr. Wareman, who is actually here today, he had an issue that he had called in and kind of just lodged his complaint as far as what needed done. And when he came to the meeting, it was responded by the team here that it was known, you know, where the complaint was and what had happened. And that everything was logged and you just said, there's not an issue. But then it took several days to research and try to find out where his complaint went. And we never did find it, did we?
Yeah, I come out and ask him my book, it's up there. I didn't have it in here, it was up there, I didn't.
But it took a long time, if I remember right, and he had to.
Same day I found it when I went back up there.
He came up to our office after the meeting.
It was up there in my other book.
And had it been addressed? Had the issue been addressed?
No, we haven't got to it yet because we were trying to organize, not just running up here and over here and stuff, so.
So we have some things going into your personal notebook. We have some things lying on the desk of the, the, uh, receptionist. We have other things that are emailed or sent to Mr. O'Hare. I'm just trying to explain to Randy what the, the method is here of, um.
I don't think you are, but.
How, then how's it done? Maybe you could explain what the method is.
We write it down, like I said. There, in here, and I got records up there too.
Do you have a policy of, like you, like we've been having, obviously bad roads lately with this weather. It's, you know, complaints, like we just had last week, that letter. So do you then log that and then try, try to prioritize what, what's worst and needs to address first? And I know like if you're southwest part of the county, you've got two or three things, you want to hit them at one time. Cause they'd be all in that area. You don't want to go to Barnard, then Westfall and then back to Ash Grove. Because, you know, because of logistics, right? So do you have a policy on doing that stuff?
Well, each of our main, uh, blade men have a specific route, our highest priority routes that we address first. It does no good to open up so-and-so's road area if it's just gonna come out here and then nothing else cleaned up, so we address some main routes.
Yeah, so you have a policy, you have a policy of what to do, what to do. But it's kind of your own personal policy and not, not the one which would have the documented stuff you're talking about.
Yeah, it's like.
Well, what I'm saying is if I asked them to find a specific complaint, they would have to search through Liz's things on her desk. They would have to search through Bob's book and/or side notes. They would have to search through emails. They would have. There, there's an actual complaint form that the Kansas Association of Counties recommends. That way you just put them all together and no matter who takes the complaint, it still gets logged, you know, in one particular thing. So when that had come up as an issue, I started talking about a map, you know, are we mapping some of these areas? Do we have a concentrated amount of issues in any one particular region? And, um, instead of working on a physical map, Michael actually brought in a software system. So we've now had this system for over a year, but we're not using it. But that's what that, that program does. It actually tracks and provides, um, input. And you can actually even access it from the public aspect of it, so that someone can.
That's not true. You can, you could submit a request or a complaint from the public. You don't get to view it as a public person.
Okay, well, I'd like, I'd like to correct you and say that anything that you have in your department, you are the highway department. Anything that you have is public, is, is available to the public. Now, what you're trying to correct me in saying is that I couldn't get on my computer and see the program right now. Okay, that's not what I was getting at. What I was getting at is that a public person can identify an issue through that program. So that they wouldn't have to call in and talk to any one of three to four people, including maybe their blade route driver. And/or any kind of supervisor and personnel or the receptionist. It would be more of a systematic, um, operation where you just do, you know, that particular access to, to put things in. Anyhow, what I'm getting at is that we've had several attempts to. Identify how certain issues can be habitually maintained. And maybe not just individually assessed. And I bring this up because I have talked to Kansas Association of Counties, um, employees. And affiliates, associates, and that's how other areas do it. So I think this would be a great opportunity, maybe if you're not going to go, I would probably go. But that might be a great way to find out how other people are doing it and maybe progress in that manner.
Well, may, I may, let me think about it. That's, yeah, that's April coming up.
And I'd be glad to go and bring back some.
What days are, what days are they?
It's just a one day.
April third.
It's just a.
Registration at eight, starts at nine.
I may try to make that. What day of the week is it?
It's a Wednesday.
Oh, okay. I probably should be able to, I may try to, yeah. Do you need to register for it?
Oh, I see Norm Bowers is on the agenda again. I wasn't sure if he was still.
Yeah, I haven't looked at the agenda. I just got it this morning.
Drainage, gravel maintenance and current hot topics, that sounds great, eleven.
Well, I think I may try to.
Yeah.
But now, I know what, what Alexis, you guys, all we're wanting, I think she's trying to say is that if you guys got it organized. However you do it, in my opinion, you may have some forum Alexis talked about that K, or Kansas Association of Counties has. But if you guys are organized on what you're planning, you're doing, that'd be, I think that's good, but, 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 you know, of what your priorities are.
Yeah, it's worked for years, I'd say. We've had no problem with it. You know, once in a while there's gonna be a glitch, whatever we do, there'll be some problem, but we go along with it fine. For I don't know how many years, so.
Now, when it comes to like, the highway stuff, like I'm new, like she said. And, and Bob, you're mostly doing like the grift, the roads need gravel and grading and stuff. Michael, do you get involved in that any too with him on what roads, the priority of work gets done or anything, or is that all Bob?
We usually discuss it.
I didn't know, I didn't know what coordination happened between you two.
He, he's the one that usually assigns the details for the crews.
Okay. But if you might.
A lot of the bigger projects and stuff is where I try to have most of the control over on that.
Okay, like bridges and stuff, right? Well, I was just curious how, you know.
If Bob decides to take care of a road that he has not discussed with me, I don't question his ability to make.
Yeah, I just didn't know you've got a policy or.
A lot of times we're out there working on a road and they kind of get it pretty well completed itself and we've got a little more time. Ask where we want to go now or what do we do, or I'll send them somewhere else to go to finish out the day or whatever. Is on the list of things to do, so.
So when you do get a particular complaint, let's say, let's say for the, for the first concept, it's just a road issue. It's a, a washed out area around the end of a culvert. Who takes that and sees it through?
Well, usually if it's a person on the route, talk to the blade man to go look at it and see.
But you're saying you do, not Michael?
Yeah, I usually call them, I'd say, cause they usually call me and so.
Okay, so let's, let's give another scenario. Both of you have said at this table that you've had issues with particular personnel. You've given them instructions or you've told them how to do particular things and then it doesn't get done that way. So if that becomes an issue, who takes that complaint and follows through?
I'd either go ahead and try to talk to them and see what the problem was, why they didn't go ahead and follow through or what the issue was.
So Bob does that as well?
Yeah, and sometimes, yeah, Michael is in on it too. Let's see, it would kind of come to try to work back and forth.
So which one of you gives instructions as far as where tree trimming is going to happen?
Usually try to make a list and we try to work around what needs to be trimmed and what, where they need to be and stuff.
So Bob, you do that too?
Yeah.
Okay.
Try to organize it.
Who determines which culverts need repaired and/or replaced?
Depends the condition of the culvert. I go look at them and check them out to see.
So Bob does that.
Something, something that we can let go and, and work on something more serious. And then come back to take that, care of that later stuff. Just because they call in and say, there's a hole here, unless it's a danger to the public. It may not get attention right that day. It may be a week while we're finishing up some other project, so.
Okay, so if one of your blade operators calls in and says he, he believes that he needs a certain amount of gravel on a particular road. Who coordinates that with the truck drivers and the, and the gravel pit, et cetera?
I listed the roads that we're figuring on working on and like now if it.
So Bob, you do that too?
If they call in and say they need something, bad metal hole, I'll send somebody out to take care of that.
Okay, and then if there's a sign that needs replaced? Or, I'm, I was told at one time by you guys that when a sign needs replaced or some sort of repair that can't be done on the spot. That they have to get permission to do that. So who does, who gives that permission or who looks at the situation and says yea or nay? Or, or tells them where to get the sign or.
Permission or whatever. We try to keep some signs on hand at each of our outlined shops. And it's up to the people there. If it's just something simple, they just go ahead and replace the sign. And let us know if they replaced it.
Let who know?
They let us know that they signed up.
Let you know?
Yeah, I believe. Usually they call in, maybe if, if I'm in there, I'll answer who, Liz or Michael, whoever happens to be there. Take the phone if I'm out in the country somewhere, or sometimes they call me on my cellphone.
So most of the employees, when they're getting any kind of direction or instruction or communication, it's happening with you, Bob? Is that what I'm getting?
That's where, my understanding and my job title is that I'm supposed to be over the crews.
If you're sick or out for a day or something, do, Michael, do you take that over then or do you have somebody else underneath it you do?
No.
You're there, okay.
You know, the sign down, if the post is broke off or something, they'll call me and I'll have them flag it. Because they have to put a one caller in before we can do and set a new post there, so.
So, that being said, we had a letter given to us last week. Did you have time to look at that? Did you look at the letter that was written? And what are we going to do about a response?
We've talked to him and my understanding, he's come to apologize to the man for writing the letter. Said he was, well, out of order. He said, yeah, sorry, didn't think it was as bad as he thought it was, let on it was, or whatever, so.
Did any of the members of the board go look at the issues that were in that letter?
Help drive. I haven't been over there yet, no.
I didn't.
What did you see wrong? Yeah, well, good.
To me, the issue is moving material that is supposed to be impacted into the surface and let hardened. Moving it, disturbing it and moving it from side to side and letting it roll off into the ditch. And this is not an isolated area or incident that I see this. To me, the, the complaint was that the roads had been addressed with added material. And now that material is not added, but has been now moved and, and is, seems to be a county policy. That we take off what is to be packed and hardened on the top surface at an angle, which includes a crown. And for a 24 foot road, I believe it's a five inch drop from center to edge. And, I mean, I, I mean, I don't know, maybe I'm ignorant, but I've never really seen a motor grader operator get out and use a, a line like that. Um, do you require them to do that?
For what? For your grade?
To measure, measure.
What are you talking about?
I said it requires on a 24 foot road, a five inch drop to crown from center to edge. Do you require them to check that? Is that something that you tell them?
These graders all have a meter.
If they all have a meter, then why are they flat roads?
Because like I told you before, a lot of that is coming from the traffic and where and like I say, yeah. Maintenance hadn't been as good as it should have been and with the weather conditions we've had here lately. We can't do what we need to do, we'd like to do, but it's trying to dress up the shoulders and we can't do that with this kind of weather stuff. And I know some of it's already been there, yes, but it takes a while. You don't just go out there just all at once and have it back. It takes some work to do it.
So to answer your question, what I see is what I see in other places too, that we apply material at a certain depth, whatever that may be. And I did notice that certain areas were showing through to the dirt where we had supposedly layered it with new material. And not only is there a crowning issue, but it's, as I said, if you dig down into that top layer, which is supposed to be packed down from traffic. I mean, there's no possible way that traffic with road, normal road conditions is going to flatten out a road that has a proper grade on it. You're gonna see some rutting and things happen in the weather when it's softer. But no one has the ability to flatten a road with a vehicle and on normal tires. I mean, that's, that's, if anyone's flattening it, it's happening with the blade. You can't flatten a road with tires.
He's not replacing, yeah, some places they are, but maybe, they're maybe not getting it back, placed back. But they are, I'll argue with you all day long, but you, I know that's what you want. That traffic is what ruins the road. It's not totally, yeah, blade has the responsibility of trying to maintain it, but traffic beats that out. And it's dry, it beats it and it throws it off to the side. When it's wet, it packs it down. I know you got a book from the transportation department, if you read it, you'll find the same thing mentioned in there.
Well, that's the whole purpose of having a grader available for the route. When it is misshapen, you go back and you shape it. But to have grader operators who just habitually scrape up the surface and push it to one side. And then scrape it and push it to the other side, that's not necessarily the purpose of grading. The purpose of grading is to fix a misshapen portion of the road, not to just disturb packed material. And I think that's what the issue is when we see somewhere that has had brand new material applied. And it has been packed down and then it's been disturbed by the blading process. So I'm not sure, when I asked you what your response is, you said someone was apologizing. Are you apologizing?
No, I said somebody on the letter was.
Well, that, that letter was signed by more than eight or 10 people.
Yeah, I'm not gonna say who, I ain't gonna mention names.
Well, I'm not concerned if there's one person who had an apology for that. I'm saying, what are we going to say in response to that letter? That's mostly in my district and I'm accountable to those people and you are too, whether you know it or not.
I know that. I've worked there 40 some years, don't think I don't know it.
So then what is the response?
We're gonna try to fix it. We can't fix it with a foot of snow on it. We gotta fix it when the weather conditions and stuff get right. We'll try, and we'll talk to the blade man, our resident with him and stuff, so. There's nothing else I can do right now.
But what do you think needs done?
You know, that was new, new rock on that road. You know, and there were ruts in it and the ruts did get cut instead of just taking and piling. You know, to be able to leave it in the center, you're gonna be leaving quite a bit of material. With the weather we've been having, if you do that, it's gonna turn to slop and it's gonna be loose material to get saturated. With the weather we've been having, if you do that, it's going to turn to slop and it's going to be loose material to get saturated that's not compacted. And then also, I think what some of the complaints were with rocks being over the road. That is something that is part of a new gravel road. You're not going to keep 100% of that material up on the travel way of the surface. There's going to be some dribble over that's going to happen when you're applying material clear to the edge. And especially with like red rock, there was quite a few of them, you know, I'm going to call them baseball sized pieces that they rolled down the edge of the road. And hopefully this spring, we have the time to go back out there, reclaim that, bring it back up and run the roller over it again. That's our intentions. You know, hopefully Mother Nature will allow us to do that.
Yeah, you run a roller, which is like a packer?
A grid roller and it helps break up the rock and it impacts the same time. Now, when that rock got hauled out there, you know, there's pieces this large out there.
Yeah, I know, chunks.
And you know, you break that down, you beat it into the base, you make yourself a road. You know, and you can't you can't stay there and continue to run that roller to a point where all those rock are broke up at the initial time. Because if you wait until you get every one of those rocks rocks broke down to a three quarter inch size, you're going to have the largest rock there, three quarter inch big and 90% fines. You just cannot do that. You gotta take some time and build the road. You know, it's a little bit different than gravel, you know? And I know the one spot that in the complaint where he did have a little bit larger wind road, took more material than what would appear to the average person was due to rutting in there because it stayed shaded for some trees. And it was soft when he went through there, you know? I'm sorry, you know, Mother Nature has not been kind to us. And the road conditions at one end of that road were different than what they were in the bottom of that draw. And if you wait for the perfect road conditions for the bottom of this draw, it's too dry over here. You know, I'm sorry. We are trying to do the best we can with what we have to work with. And I expect you guys to go look at these problems and verify if it's a problem or if it's our problem. Because I disagree with some of the complaints that come in. I bit my tongue too damn long.
And I was just going over the shoulder. Like I say, it's been wet conditions. When it's wet, that stuff won't move across the moldboard like it should. Some of it will go around the end of it and roll over the shoulder and stuff. So we have to go back and try to retrieve that later on when conditions are right. Like I say, it's not going to be Interstate 70 every day out there.
So, Michael, you said you disagree with the complaints, do well, some of the complaints that come through. What is your route that you drive to check roads and how often do you do that and when?
It depends. You know, I don't take the same route.
You don't check priority roads on a regular basis, like any given time?
There's a thousand miles out there we try to drive. You can't just.
You have a thousand miles of priority road?
Yeah.
No, it's a thousand miles.
We were down Elk two times. We were down the day before you got that and the day after we got that to look and see what was wrong. So don't say we weren't out there driving. I've been down there. I've been on the Vesper Road. I've been up.
I'm asking, is there a route that you drive?
No, there is no set route that any of us drive.
Why not?
Why should there be?
Not allow.
Why should there be? Because there are high traffic areas that are being poorly maintained that need some guidance. That's why.
Well, we've been down those roads. I know nobody thinks so. Thinks I just sit up there twiddling my thumbs. But I've been down the Vesper Road, been down the Green Valley Road, Marion Road.
So then how if if that's true, then how are we getting these issues where it has to be the public to bring it to our attention to just merely even flag a hole that is a potential danger to to a traveler?
Like I say, I've been down them. I got them wrote down where the problems are. I know everybody thinks I don't, but I do. And I've talked to the guys, like I told you a while ago. Unless it's a real bad danger, we'll go out and fix it. If it's something that we can just flag for right now and get to later, that's what we do. Because we got 200 bridges. We got three, four thousand culverts and box bridges to try to keep up with. And this kind of weather, we can't fix everyone. I'm assuming somebody sees the hole and calls it in. We go out and try to mark it or check it out. But it may not get fixed right now because the ground's frozen or muddy or whatever. So we work on it when we can, as soon as we can.
Can you identify which routes need more work than others or which routes are in a better condition than others?
Yeah, probably can.
Okay, would you bring that to the board then, please?
Right now, I may.
No, no, when 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 you sit down and look at a map and you can say, I know that this particular route has crowns on the road, does not disturb the foundational base of the road when when it is being graded and does not have materials on it that are boulders this size, et cetera, et cetera. It has been a well worked road for a period of long enough that it is not in an immediate need. Can you identify those areas versus the ones that are flat or sunken in the middle and have dirt showing through and or large boulders or are in need of material? Can you identify those regions for us?
Yeah, that like I say, they're going to change as you go along. They change from time to time, so.
So I'll I'll bring up an issue. I I had talked to you about, and and this is just something that I travel, the road that goes past the dump, okay? Not only do I take things to the dump, but I'm on that road. Not quite weekly, but I've noticed that there is no crown in that road and there hasn't been for quite a while. And I brought it to your attention and actually, the last time that there was some bad weather, there were ponds sitting in the middle of the road in specific areas. So if if that is the case and you know that to be a well traveled road and you say you know it because you've been out there, what needs to be done on that road?
If you're talking about the one, I think from.
From I-18 to the north.
Yeah. I've traveled that, yes. And that material on that road, it's the kind of material that everybody comes off that highway and puts their foot in the gas and accelerates and the washboards at that road up there and then they come back down the hill and they slam on their brakes and puts all the washboards in there and the guy tries to maintain that. And for his crown, I got a crown meter I set on the dash of my pickup. And I run it here a while back. I run a career up to County Line Bethany. Maybe it's not a five to one, but I never had anything less than a two to one. It's in itself on it. And we tried to maintain it, blade it as often as we can.
So someone had brought it to my attention that I think before you may have been in the positions that you're in, the board would go out and they even told me that that was part of the purchase. I mean, I'm not sure why we need a king cab extended pickup for one person to drive around, but they said that that's why we had purchased this vehicle for the Highway Department. So I think it might be a good idea for the commission to actually go out and look at some of these roads in the near future. Since we just had a major snowfall, we'll be able to see where where some of these high traffic areas are and maybe what some of the issues are. Maybe you could help us understand what needs to be done. And then you can tell us what we can do to help facilitate that. Because what you're saying, Bob, is that, you know, it takes years to correct some of these issues and that some of these issues have been created over years. So let's talk about the future plan for it then, because we know there's not an immediate fix. Would you be willing to go out and look at some of these areas together?
With him or you?
Yeah, I think the group must needs to go.
Well, I've been to a lot of them because I used to be a builder here, so, but they've changed. Obviously, they change, obviously with this weather. But yeah, I look at some. I know of some that that are bad and but to be fair, we've had this bad weather last four months. They it's, you know, they can't just deal with all that right now, you know? We gotta be fair to let the weather kind of stabilize, Alexis, I think, a little bit to be fair to these guys. But this weather now, it's a mud hole out there. We get snow and rain and snow and ice and snow and.
Well, I'm not saying doing it this week, but I let's say a month, a month goes by.
I would let it try to get a dry down and hopefully it'll dry down one of these years, huh? We've been for four months from October on. October, we got eight inches of rain. I did. And August, November was blizzard, more snow and rain we've been having. So these last four months, these guys can't be blamed for these roads because they're just this weather. But like when we do get better weather, then maybe I agree with your point. We could go around and on our own or with together and maybe point things out.
We fought all kinds of flooding last ragged year ago.
Yeah, I know.
There, we down the west for.
By the west for.
We're up to the hunter areas over at Barn and we've been trying to catch up, just fixing and repairing that. We haven't had time to do the maintenance we wanted to. We've had to try to address safety issues on the flooding areas.
But what I'm ultimately getting at though, there's a difference between a situation that was created by weather and a situation that was created by lack of policy and or oversight. We've had, and maybe you haven't been here because this has happened in the past couple of months, but we've had our supervisory personnel in the Highway Department tell us that they have not been able to get people to do what they're told to do. That's an issue to me. And, you know, if we look at some of these areas and say, oh, this particular route, you know, has this issue, maybe that person needs training on that particular issue. You know, if if someone is not keeping a crown in the road or digging down to the dirt through that top layer that is supposed to be packed in, that is a maintenance issue. It's not a weather issue. That's what I'm getting at. There is a difference.
Yeah, I I know some of the maintain jobs, I agree, have some issues.
And they're not all skilled in the same thing. Maybe one maintainer keeps good edges and no curves, but does not necessarily keep the proper crown. Therefore, you wonder why the road is still holding moisture, too much moisture, you know? Um, another operator may keep that crown, but doesn't take the time to get out and take the boulders off the road. They need individually instructed on what their weaknesses are so that we can have more of a uniform expectation.
I agree.
And if you need help to facilitate that, I think that's where we could be in.
I think those are, you know.
We discussed it for years. We would love to have a training employee, a working foreman that has the time and ability to be working with the individuals on a daily basis.
Yeah, I agree.
You know, if if you got, I guarantee you, there's 100 people out in the public to think they could hop in a motor grader and fix their road themselves. I want to watch it because it is not easy.
Yeah, I know.
It is a complicated machine. And I don't know if you guys are aware of it, there are not training areas for it. You have to do this stuff inside, in-house. You know, the LTAP has one. We've done it twice in Lincoln County. It is not something that's good training, you know, and it's.
Last when Louie went out, he was going to show us how to shape up a road and stuff. And finally he comes and says, well, I'm sorry, this works all together different and the material where I come from. I guess, so.
Well, that's just that we have such a variety of roads. We have dirt roads. You have your, we go to the rock, red rock, sand, sand rock, sandy stuff. You have your gravel. You got, I know, you got all kinds of materials, so you gotta do it differently.
Just within our county. Yeah, right. Then, you know, you bring in an instructor that's from northeast Nebraska or eastern Nebraska, trying to tell us how to do it on our roads. It didn't work and he readily admitted that, you know? And there's no other training, you know? Yeah, send them to VOTEC. They're going to learn how to make a parking lot. They're going to learn how to blue top something, you know? They they don't have a class designed to make roads.
Yeah, or gravel without the hills, you know, and they're different.
It would be awesome if there was. I just have not found it and do not know of it. I know the state of Alabama is working on a huge plan and I plan on learning about it in April. We'll see what they have to offer. You know, they they went to some statewide training, you know, that state's dealing with the same thing that Lincoln County's dealing with. Celine County's dealing the same thing. Mitchell County's dealing with it.
We all have the same thing.
You know, you know, the employees we get now or have offered to us are different now than what they used to be. You know, it used to be a farmer that needed another job, essentially, you know? The farm didn't support them, but they could. It was perfect for them, you know? But they lived, they worked on those roads. They're neighbors with the people on those roads and all that stuff makes a difference. Now, you know, finding employees is very hard in Lincoln County.
If I may change the topic, I was also asked, did you do bids for chemicals this year?
I do not know what Dan did on that. I believe he did.
Okay.
I will need to check with him.
Okay, that and on that same question.
We did do bids on some chemical for the Highway Department.
I meant for spring. That's what I meant for noxious weed.
No, I don't know if he's done anything.
Okay, and and it was kind of brought to my attention, um, some people were asking if the bids had been done and then looking at the purchase prices from last year, it was kind of a comment made that we didn't do enough, we didn't purchase enough to satisfy what one particular region may need, let alone the entire county. So I'd like to know what the plan is. I mean, now that the the Public Works Department is head of noxious weed, I would like to know what the plan is to address some of that. I think I explained to you a few weeks ago, we have some issues with Johnson grass over in my area that I had had several people call me and take me out on routes past their places last year saying that, and the way I brought it up was talking about potentially contracting out some mowing because none of the mowing got done at the end of the season until the Johnson grass is already headed out. And then the mowers just blew seed all along the ditches, which then ends up spreading into the fields, et cetera. So I'd like to know what the game plan is for that this year ahead of time.
I'll get I'll get together with Dan and maybe he can join me in a meeting and explain it.
That'd be great. And quantity of purchasing, you know, of of the chemicals that are purchased. It was kind of the comment that we hadn't purchased enough for one person to do one township, let alone to take care of everything that needs to be taken care of, so.
Do you have any idea how much we spend a year on chemicals?
We spent about 30,000 last year.
30,000?
Twenty, I think, I think it was in the 20, close to 30, 20 something.
Out of our noxious weed department?
Yes, but that was for everything, for the whole year.
And that's just chemical?
Yes, yes.
Now, we sell chemical to some to the private.
It's very limited, I believe.
Yeah, I know. I've gotten some up there before. And that's just basically a service to the customer.
Required, I believe it's mandated that you have it available.
The county doesn't make much money on that or any.
Oh, they have to sell at that cost, don't they? I think, I don't know.
I think they did or close to cost. Dan told me before. I bought some Torridon or Badville or something.
I, yeah. I did get a letter here from the Camps Department of Transportation. Our high risk rural roads project that we submitted for fiscal year 2021 did not get selected. They did say that if additional funding becomes available, we may be contacted regarding our request for funding. So at this time, we will not be receiving any funds from HRR this year. LMM has been making progress on a bridge out there. They got all the plywood decking down, all of the uh false work forming and stuff is done. They're starting to tie steel this week. We're going to be having a pre-deck concrete pour meeting this Wednesday. If the weather would be great, there's potential that we could pour next week, but based on the weather, I don't know when that's going to happen. You know, you need to have the right temperatures to do it.
Well, it's too cold, though, isn't it?
Yeah, it's borderline. You know, I know they want to see 35 plus in warming from when they start. And I don't see that in the forecast. Uh, the concrete is coming all the way from Russell, so using warm water is not good. That will be affecting your air content, especially tumbling for 40, 45 minutes to get on site. It's just not going to have the right air content. We might get some bad inspections and all that stuff ends up running up the cost of the bridge, so.
Really don't like get concrete from walkers here?
Um, this was a contractor bid job.
Okay.
They, I know this contractor has in the past used Walker concrete for concrete. Um, but the last job and this job, they did not.
I did curious.
So that is the point on that bridge. Um, our other bridge that we've been working on, our steel bridge, we just haven't been out there due to the weather. It's just a muddy, muddy mess. I put a request out to check on that. I put a request out to check on that contract mowing. And as far as it's known, there's only two counties that have done it. One was Sherman County several years ago, and they quit doing it seven to eight years ago because it was too expensive. And the other county is Stanton County, and they just signed a contract last year for five years. To do six hundred and fifty-six miles of roadway. Three times a year for two hundred and forty thousand dollars. So that computes to a dollar twenty-two per mile per mow. So. That is very expensive in my opinion.
We do our own.
Southwest Kansas.
We do our own here, right?
Yeah, we do our own with side mount.
How often do we, depends on how wet it is, I suppose, and how fast the grass grows.
Yeah.
It's been two to three times.
Two to three times a year?
Yeah, we sure try for two once in a string and then later in the fall, so we can get them kind of knocked down for snow if we can. We had some problems this year, there's breakdowns with mowers, we didn't get around it. Yet quite everything rode out like we'd have liked to, but, you know, it takes sometimes serious depending on weather.
Those are John Deere forty-twenty's?
Forty-four thirty's, we got three of those, a Komatsu and a New Holland.
You guys maintain them yourselves? Very much to work on one of them things, I think. Okay.
Yeah, they're working on it right now, up there in the shop, repairing the mower decks and fixing them up, getting ready to go and. Tractors and stuff, whatever we can do.
Yeah.
You know, when Western Kansas has got away with it, uh, by doing the contracting. Um, their road ditches are much different than ours, it's flat, they have. Slope, they don't have the rocks. Which, I, I would hate to say, I, I was doing some figuring on what it would cost if we were to. Contract at the same cost, and it was gonna be over four hundred thousand dollars, I believe. So.
That's for five, for five years?
Well, no, 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 that's per year.
Per year, oh, per year, yeah.
Yeah.
That's a lot of money.
Yeah. We have due this month. A warranty for our oldest twelve M two motor grader. If we would like to keep it under warranty and add a twenty-four month, two thousand hour warranty. That would cost us twelve thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three dollars and eighty-five cents. Uh, I recommend that we do do a warranty to continue having that service for these motor graders, we have one due now, and I believe. In three or four months, we should have another one coming due also.
Are those CAT motors?
Uh, both of these will be.
With fully?
Yes.
And is this, is this the first set that was purchased, does that mean that this is the year that they expire their buyback value guarantee?
Um, sure it is. And I don't think that first year we even did that option, see, we bought in two thousand and fourteen. We did not buy anything in two thousand and fifteen, and we bought in sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen.
Those persons, we didn't buy that, didn't have that.
No, I don't even think it was offered then.
I know, I know it wasn't.
And.
So this is a.
The buyback numbers that came.
This is a twelve model?
Uh, two thousand and thirteen.
Two thousand and thirteen. So this is actually one that would have been if we did the five-year.
We never were set up to have these in the five-year.
We're on, we're, we're due to, would this be one of them that would go if we would?
No, no, we got two other machines that would go before these.
He said two years, two thousand hours?
Yes, sir.
What are we currently putting on them on average?
We put right around a thousand hours, depending on the weather.
A year?
Yeah, that's a pretty good average.
How soon do you need to know on that?
I'd like to know today.
My experience with that is probably, is probably wise to do it, because if something happens, twelve thousand dollars is a drop in the bucket.
Yeah, two years ago, we did it on those, uh, John Deeres, I think it was a little over fifteen thousand. On those, on the seven-sevenths.
For both?
No, each.
And what do we get under the warranty? We're still getting the thousand, thousand hour change, like the fluid change and the.
That's not part of the warranty, no, that's part of a service.
Does that extend your service, is your service ever even expiring now?
No, not yet, I don't believe it is at that point, it will be soon.
Maybe separate probably from this.
Yeah.
This is like if the engine blows.
Engine transmission.
Transmission, major, major stuff, which it costs twenty, thirty thousand.
Powertrain and hydraulics are the main components covered.
I'd move that we go ahead and extend the warranty on two thousand and thirteen motor grader.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to extend the warranty for twenty-four months at twenty thou- twenty, twelve thousand.
Seven sixty-three.
Seven sixty-three, seven hundred and sixty-three dollars. With CAT for two thousand and thirteen motor grader, any further discussion? If not, those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Aye, none opposed?
And then I have the numbers that we discussed there last week on gravel. From both, I believe was Wolf Creek and Zacco pit. So.
Okay, so per mile of gravel, it was ten thousand sixty-five coming from the Mitler pit, and it's six thousand, three hundred and eighty coming from. The Zacco pit, is that what I'm seeing?
Uh, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And that's not a true representation, actually. Because. When the sh- Mitler was drawn up, that was done with one dollar per cubic yard of gravel. So that number would actually be higher now. I did not change these numbers at all, that's just what I had filled out and gave to you guys priorly.
Okay, so this is for three inches of gravel on a twenty-four foot roadway?
Yeah, so the gravel cost itself would go up to two thousand, five hundred and seventy-eight ninety-five. So it's basically gonna be an additional eleven hundred and seventy-three dollars. In the blue, no, 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 just on the.
Per mile, per mile?
Per mile, yes.
The others figured it two and a half or two whatever.
Two dollars, yes. So, leave that information for now, thank you, that's all I have this week.
This is a copy of the agreement that we received today from Mr. Schneider and his attorney. As far as moving forward, based on the mediation with the change of. Not forwarding five years' worth of funds to the county, but rather him being individually responsible for those five years of additional material. We read over it today, and we intend to forward it to the county attorney, if he would like to give us any comments or feedback. Um, under the responsibility of the county, the bottom of the first page is pretty much just section one and two kind of pertains to your department. He also intends to change, under responsibility of Schneider, number one. Excuse me, wait a minute, number two, Schneider shall then be responsible until June first, twenty twenty-four, for deciding where new surface materials are needed on project roads. He said that he would like to add, um, with the approval of the county. And then it also says during that time, he shall be solely responsible financially for the cost of purchasing and hauling such materials. And he shall coordinate schedules with the county's road department before putting any new material on the roadway. Is there anything further while we have you here with the highway department that you'd like to?
Oh, I think that, that pretty well covers it.
So you said this blue line item for gravel cost is two thousand, three hundred and forty-six dollars per mile with, but then you said the additional cost is?
That, that would be correct on the Zacco pit, it was the Mitler pit that would go up.
Oh, because that was calculated pre-increase?
That was pre-increase, yes.
So what we're looking at is the material cost per mile of gravel at three inches thick on a twenty-four inch roadway is two thousand, three hundred and forty-six dollars. And that is calculated at the two dollars per cubic yard. Okay.
Yes, that's what we will be paying the landowner.
How come the different prices in gravel, you got different contracts with each one?
No, the, uh, cost of gravel went up in between the making of these two schedules.
Okay.
The price went from one dollar cubic yard to landowners to two dollars per cubic yard.
The two. Now that Zacco pit's the closest one, right?
Yeah, it's.
That'd be the one you'd probably use?
More than likely, yes.
You guys just pick, when it comes to something like that, you got several options for gravel pits, you just pick the closest one always, or?
We try to.
I do, kept the mileage down as much as I can.
And try to be as fair and equal as you can to the pit owners.
Try to give them all bits of business, so.
Yeah.
Don't, don't give one pit a lot more business than the other ones. Now.
And it's tough sometimes.
We just got pits here and over here, so we got a long haul, I'm not up in it.
Well, yeah, then you should do the less awful, the cheapest, you know, for the county.
Try to get to a better quality.
When you guys, this may be a dumb question, like when you get gravel out of these pits, and I know I was talking before, we've got some clay that's in that gravel, and I know. That's the materials you gotta deal with, you guys blend that, when you dig it, when you're loading that gravel out of a pit on your trucks, do you try to blend it in a pile? So you kind of mix that clay with gravel, with sand?
The dozer operator, while he's piling it, he tries to mix it, the loader operator will do a little bit of mixing usually. You know, unless it's a short haul and, you know, he's constantly in the pile to the truck, which happens sometimes.
Because, you know, we've had this clay problem, and that's not your guys' fault.
And the blade operator.
But if we can avoid that stuff, even pushing away in the corner and don't even use that clay, if we can. You know, do that, I don't, maybe it's not.
There's very few pits we have that you can segregate.
Yeah, I was wondering, you can't probably say it's probably all together, huh?
Cause it's kind of all mixed together, until you get it laid on the road, get it rained, a lot of the time you don't really know it's there until it shows up.
Because of the mail carrier in the last three, four years, uh, that was one thing I noticed was that more of that newer stuff you guys were putting on had that clay in it, it really made it greasy and. And then it would never solidify and get solid, and, and I know, again, I'm not blaming you guys, cause that's what you have to deal with, but that stuff is not good. If we can avoid that at all costs, we should, and I know maybe you can't, but.
Yeah, like say, when you're pushing out a pile of that, you can't tell a lot of times it's, what it's gonna be. Until you get it on the road, it looks good in there when you're piling it, but it may turn out, and we got a lot of places that. From here to the street out here, just nice and stable, and then there'll be a stretch a hundred foot, it's terrible.
Right.
Just having to catch a little pocket of that, so.
Yeah, okay.
We've had to terminate contracts in the past due to poor gravel. You know, it, it looked good in the pile, looked good on the road, then it rained and it was horrible.
I know, it's tough.
You know, and.
Especially with the weather.
Yeah. And usually most any of the gravel takes at least two years to kind of get settled in, and that kind of stuff blew out, washed out of it and stuff, so. Right after we haul up the first rain or two, it's, it's gonna be a mess, so.
Yeah.
Anything else for us today? All right, thank you.
Flabbed snow, the whole day yesterday, trying to get roads.
Yeah.
Did we get the school open too?
Yes. Yeah, please.
Don did forward us an email, um, regarding the repowering for Smokey Hills, and so we will be talking about a road maintenance agreement in the future.
Yes, I am gathering some additional options for some road maintenance agreements.
Okay, some, um, like a template that you found through someone else, or?
Yeah, what another county has used.
Okay.
Lots changed in the last seventeen years, or ten years, I guess it is.
Sure it has, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
No, thank you.
Don, did you want to finish our portion of the discussion about what we want to consider?
I don't remember where we were at, but I just feel like we need to be doing everything consistently.
I, I think you're right, Don, and I, and I would think that we do it the way the highway department has, I, unless we can. One of the problems is that when we changed. We were an hour from employment. You know, that's, that's probably right, and I never even thought about it, I don't know if it's that, but. That certainly would enter into the, to the reasoning and, and unless. At least I was not aware that, I just assumed that time started here and ended here, but.
I.
Or when he was on call, I mean, you know.
Yeah.
When, I think it is important that he have a vehicle at his house so he can respond, uh, to the areas of the county, you know, instead of having to come to Lincoln, and that makes it. That involves forty minutes probably for him, uh, you know, that would be just drag time, but. My feeling is that you, that we probably need to, that needs to start reflecting in his time card, and we need to deal with it, same as we do the highway department.
The other question that I had is kind of a question that I've fielded from department heads for quite some time, but, you know, nobody really wants to come down and say anything. Why are everybody's hours not the same that are working here in the courthouse? And the question would be is why is it a particular department capable of setting their own hours? If that's the case, then the question is, is can the treasurer solve this?
Can any department?
Yeah, set their own hours, can the appraiser's office set their own hours? Why is the people that stop, that are county employees within the courthouse confines not the same hours? We need eight to 4:30, which.
Do we have, excuse my interruption, we do have a policy, because you showed it to me about not doing overtime. Do we have one setting hours?
Not setting hours.
That's probably something we need to do.
I didn't look at it and see, but I don't remember it specifically being there. And I think the health department follows our eight to 4:30 policy or hours they used to not, and I think they asked if they could, because they used to be open eight to five. But, you know, and then we have like transportation boss again that says that their published hours are eight to five. I just think that it it makes it kind of confusing, and now that we have voicemail, I mean, there's people that think that we should be here at eight o'clock at night. But it's a little hard when everybody has different hours. Now, I understand the the highway department crew having different hours than us having, but I think the landfill is kind of on the same stretch that we are. It's a little bit harder to monitor and figure out what's happening when you don't have, and people can set their come and go hours. And again, the one thing that I try to stress to everybody is we don't have comp time, we do not have a comp time policy. Technically, you aren't supposed to show up at six o'clock today just because you know you want to take off.
Next.
At two o'clock, yeah.
Early for the weekend, yeah.
You know, if there's an emergency situation, that's the only time that it's been approved. So for example, the everybody that reported to work on Sunday, blading roads, they could comp their time out at the end of the week because there is.
Right.
An emergency situation, but just a regulatory situation is.
Is, do we have that going on currently or still?
Where people are comping their time.
Okay, so we need to, we need to draft a letter from the commission then, for sure, for us to sign and then send out universally to the departments and says. And then I think we need to adopt a policy then that says these are our hours, and we already have a no comp time policy, so we're just going to reiterate that that is an existing policy. And we're sticking from eight to 4:30, correct? I mean, I think that's appropriate. That gives a half an hour lunch, and it's two 15-minute breaks in there in that eight-hour time period.
What's the normal hours right now?
Eight to 4:30.
Okay.
With that half an hour lunch.
Yes.
That's what the courthouse has been open, that's what most departments are doing, but what she's saying is we have issues where people won't come till maybe nine and then stay till five. Or come early at seven and leave at 3:30 or something like that. And then she's also saying that there are issues where someone who just works that 40 hours a week may stay two hours late on a Thursday and then leave two hours late, or leave two hours early that following Friday, like the next day. And that's, we can't just have that going on without a specific incident. For example, the blading is a great, I mean, they came in on the weekend, so instead of getting overtime, they'll just not work a half a day on Monday or Tuesday or however that works out.
Right, like now the health department, for example, had come and asked you guys when they do their lab draw day, that they comp their time out. When they have their week day, they comp their time out during the week.
It's a scheduled thing because of an event.
Yes, and that's something that you guys have pre-approved, but we right now have employees that choose to say, I just don't want to work Friday afternoon, so I'm gonna make sure that I come to work an hour early.
So I can take off early Friday.
Yeah.
When we give them adequate leave time. I mean, I'm sorry, we have plenty of time for people to to use.
Just somebody like, you were just saying John Paul, who did, comes, he came in yesterday, which is great to clean the the snow off. Now that's, now does that, does he, that up to him where he can do that, or does he have to get approval by someone to do that?
Well, what he did today was he come in and he asked if he could just take off early today. And I told him that was up to him because that was an emergency situation if he wanted to, but I don't have a problem with paying people overtime if they work the overtime. I, you you guys have a policy that says no overtime, except for when there's emergency situations.
Which that would be, but if he didn't want to take the overtime and wanted to comp it, why would we pay the extra money?
Right.
No.
If that's the employee's choice.
But something like that was where there's real ish, real work, and he's not just taking off and leaving early Friday to just take you out of town. But but he ain't really doing work cleaning the the snow off, so I look, I think that's good then. So we want to be, let be flexible enough to allow that.
Right.
You don't want to be too strict here where he can't get on Sunday because the rules are so stringent, we can't allow that.
And I think he's an exception because he's doing that type of maintenance, but in our regular departments, let's say the appraiser's office, I'm just pulling one out of thin air. You know, they're here to serve the public at the counter.
Right.
And they have hours and leave time.
During normal times.
Right, so if if they were going to start making their own schedule that said, you know, they were leaving early every Thursday afternoon so that they could, or staying late every Thursday afternoon so that they could leave early on Friday afternoons. That really doesn't fall in line with your typical 40-hour work week. So we need to have a.
I agree with that.
A general idea of what should be expected.
And what you just said on time, I think it's good, about eight thirty, eight to four thirty?
It's eight to four thirty so they can have a half hour unpaid lunch. But then there are two 15-minute breaks in an eight-hour day that are paid.
Well, that'd be fine to me, I don't know about everyone else.
I think that's fine, I think we need to write it down now. And we need to write a letter that addresses that and the comp time issue and the overtime issue, unless they have preapproval or an emergency situation, then it's not supposed to be happening at all.
Yeah, emergency, we want to put that emergency situation in there, just like John Paul deal or whatever. Like you have to come in sometimes, maybe you were here that weekend, emergency deal, because HR was gone and you had to do our, of course, you're you're an elected official, so you're not really not part of this, but. But you had to come in and do the payroll last month, remember, so.
So speaking of that.
And you might have needed your helper to help you, so that would be a special situation too, right?
With approval, right, because she's the department head.
Right.
So on that note, do we have, how many applications do we have? Do we need to follow through on any more advertising?
You know, honestly, Hannah's been taking the applications. I know that we have some, I haven't counted them, but I know on the HR website there was a couple.
Okay.
Um, I need to get advertised in the Salina Journal, I kind of was remiss.
So we still have some advertising we need to do. So we need to extend the deadline because we are on our, we are at our deadline. And I actually noticed the National Association of Counties, which we don't pay to belong to, but I actually had a flyer from them that said they do job advertising. So I'm wondering, does KAC do that as well?
I think so.
Because that might be a good place to just do a quick outreach. You never know what's available, and and those people are pretty.
I'm almost positive they do, like in their, aren't they the one that has the KC, is it the Kansas comments or the KC comments?
Okay.
They used to print them, but the only, the only issue with that is the only people that are seeing those are the people that are getting them, which are the supervisors, and I'll just be honest. You have good employees you don't want to share with.
Yeah.
But that's okay, I can, I will most definitely send out to that. And I know that we had, I know Dee Dee had a couple of the ambulance director positions, and I know that Hannah said that she printed off the HR site a couple more applications, but we really haven't got a huge broad amount.
Okay, so what do we want to do? Do we need to make a motion for an extension? How are you on working for toward this month's time or payable? Because we're, we're, this is.
Am I almost done with it?
Well, no, I mean, I know you're just gonna start it, right?
Um, I've, I've been, so we had, kind of, this is kind of another contention that I have, but. We had set the deadline at having time cards in on the 21st at 9:00 AM, so that it would have time to work on it during business hours. And, but let me rephrase that. It's so that anybody has to had time, because we say two and a half days. I had a particular department that did not have their time cards in, and when I called them, I got some backlash about it. I do now have their time cards, and I I got them Friday afternoon, so Sunday, I spent most of Sunday up here.
Did every other department have them in on the 21st? Okay.
And I, it's, it's frustrating for me because I feel like everybody is expecting us to do our jobs. I'm gonna just be quite frank with you, I may have got a little rude and said, that's fine, if I don't have the time cards by today, I'm only paying them what I have time cards through.
Is that the highway department?
Yes, and I struggle with that because that's not who I am, and that's not the person that I am. Legally, I'm not even sure if we could do that if we knew that they worked, but I don't know how I know what they worked if I've not provided the information to know that. But I personally would like to just not pay people one day and see what happens.
Did you, at that time, at the end of the third week in the month, did you have all the time cards leading up to?
I had through the 15th for that department.
So you were missing the current week.
Yes, because they do bring their time cards in, so basically what everybody would have gotten paid for was the 26th through the 15th of the month, because that's what I had. And I struggle with it, folks, because I, you know, I don't want to openly criticize other people and their jobs, but I'm tired of it. I am expected to do my job and have it done every single month. I'm expected to do it every single day. I don't understand why it's so hard to expect another department to do so. I bend over backwards and I try to help departments, I stop what I'm doing so that I can help them so that they can get easy resolution. And really what I'm going to start doing now is not to do that. I will say, I will provide you that information within three business days, and we'll see how they like it. Because it's not fair, and it's, this is not fair to the employees. I really, really, really would like to not have their paychecks show up in their accounts on Thursday, but I can't do that because that's not in my soul, it's not the person that I am. But I just would like people to understand that we all require another department to do their jobs, to do our jobs in a timely fashion. I will say this, I have, I told Hannah today, and and this is going to be on me, and I've made the decision, but we also said we need your bills. If you have bills to pay, 9:00 AM Thursday is the date that it is, so that Hannah is not data entering 300 and some thousand dollars of the bills on, in a two-day period of time.
Right.
And we had a department that brought in a stack of bills today, and I told Hannah, if you have time, but after this, you send out your cross match and that's it. This, what we have in right now, as of today, right, right this very moment, is it, and it's just gonna have to wait. And if our vendors suffer because of it, then our vendors suffer. There is no reason why these people can't bring up their bills, absolutely no reason. And so that's kind of where we're at, and if that means that we don't pay the highway department fuel, that means we don't pay them fuel this month. And I guess if they don't want to provide access to our county departments for fuel in the future, then we'll negotiate and have them go out to Mighty Mart or Myers and start filling up. Because I, we can't continue to delay, because basically what we're doing is that's when you make mistakes, is is we are doing crunch time. That's why we get in the wrong vendor paid for this particular bill, and it's just, I'm done. And I told Hannah, that's not on her, that's on me. And if the department head has an issue and they want to talk to me about it, I'd be more than happy to talk to him, but the deadline was the 21st.
So for example, on the highway department billing, who is responsible for that?
We, the highway.
I mean, I know.
Secretary brings the bills to us.
So the secretary is the one tracking the accounts payable for their department?
Yes, and what happens with them, because they are a larger, larger vendor, they do have a lot more invoices. When I first started here, I I started part-time, and basically all I was done, did was I was hired to come in and data enter accounts payable. So basically, they would say the 25th is the cutoff, Don would start on the 25th, data entering, and we would do everything. Well, you know, as you learn your job, you learn what can make things easier. So what we did was we asked the departments, bring in your invoices as they come in. Instead of waiting to bring them up with time cards once a month, bring in your invoices so that we can be data entering them all month long. Saves on mistakes, saves on errors. Well, what happens with the bigger departments is they also have their own systems that they can input them bills in. So basically what we do is we send them a cross match, where we send them what we say we're paying out of their funds. There, they go through and check them just to make sure that we've gotten everything and that we we all match the invoices. Because some invoices come here and and we open them, it's kind of hard to explain, but some of those we get, like your utility bills.
They send, they send them mail to you, you open it, right?
So we open it, we data enter it in, so it's a cross balance. Um, the health department, they tend to cross balance back after the fact, so, you know, if there's an invoice that's missing or they haven't figured it out, but that's kind of what happens. You know, is it necessary? I don't know, but that's what they've asked us to do. They've asked us to provide that so they can double-check our entries, make sure that the line items are the line items that they want to come out of. But in order to get all that accomplished, we have to have the time to do it in.
Well, I think that brings us back to the conversation about universal time cards. I mean, it's, it's just moving in the direction of a uniform expectation that's on all departments, and then you have exceptions, but those are built in. You go by the baseline for everyone, and if something is out of line, then you'll know whether it fits into that category of exceptions or not. And if it doesn't, it needs to be addressed, because basically now, we're going on several months of the same issues that have already been brought to our attention as a board, and we have to make that decision. So I think we need to put on the agenda for for next time, I have the resolution for the the road gravel, but the time clock system, the uniform time card, at least until that time clock system can be established. And a policy for setting hours, that what the standard hours are with the exemptions listed, and then to reiterate that we already have an existing policy that says no comp time, unless it's pre-approved, et cetera. I mean, everyone wants to.
This was in your guidelines, yeah.
Right, and everyone wants to talk about exemptions, I mean, we get into this circular conversation with the highway department, well, if the weather, if the this, there's always going to be an if, no matter what the scenario is, but you have to have a baseline expectation so that you can talk about something or plan on something, and then take the exceptions when they come. So I think we need to do that from from this table down the line.
I'd say, I I feel like if we had that occur, that it's not coming from me, it's coming from you guys. And if you guys don't agree with me, it's okay to tell me that, I may get angry about it, I may argue with you because I'm a debater in in my mannerisms, but it's it's okay. But I just feel like we are just not consistent in what what our rules are. And and then here I am, I'm old school, and I've been doing it for years, and then all of a sudden I'm doing payroll, and I'm like, when did this change? Like, I'm sorry, down to the fact that we have a half an hour increment in which they have to use their leave time, that's as low as it goes. And my own staff member wrote down a quarter of an hour, and I said, we don't take leave time in quarters of hours, Hannah. And she's like, oh, well, if it balanced out during the month, you know, Denver never said anything. Well, no, they're they're a half an hour increment, and it's like, and no offense for her, she stayed and helped me, and she hasn't recorded her time. So I I told her, I said, I know you helped me on such and such a day. And I said, we gotta get better about that, so, you know, it's our own as well, we have to. And down to the hours, I spent 96 and a half hours total, including county time and overtime, on payroll. So if you guys kind of want to have an idea, that would have been what would have been like the 26th through the 25th.
Wait, wait, we're going back to January?
Yes, so January 26th through February 25th, you guys kind of wanted to know how much. Now, that's the time that I actually wrote down, I will tell you what there was.
There was an hour here. But some of that was configuring things that were wrong, so hopefully that won't be a future problem, so what was the hour you told me?
96 and a half hours. And I can tell you how much of it was.
And that was all payroll?
Yes, that's payroll out of my time, daytime and nighttime hours. With 51 and a half or 51 and a quarter hours happening after hours.
That, but that's because of your position, so.
Yeah.
You did 40 some of it on your, on during your.
During my.
Off your time.
Yeah, okay. And that's just what I, you know, that would be the times that was garnered more than probably an hour.
So that's gonna be your overtime paid for this?
Yes.
Okay, so.
It just kind of gives you an idea of what.
What were the working hours for for that time period for everyone, 100 and?
168.
68.
So it kind of gives you an idea of how many hours it takes to do.
And that was without Hannah, or do you have Hannah?
I, that does not include Hannah, Hannah had five and a half hours of overtime.
With payroll or with other?
With payroll, and, because that was Monday and Tuesday.
So do we need to bump this up to 100?
Yes, and then we did two and a half days of straightening out leave time.
But that's separate from actual payroll work, so we're looking at almost 100 hours. But that is also because of the the mechanism by which we are triple calculating. I mean, if we had a time clock system, you don't have to go back and hand-check our calculations by each employee.
You just would have to check the exceptions. And, you know, I had somebody say, an ambulance attendant say, well, I'm not gonna be able to clock in. well, I'm not going to be able to clock in during an emergency. And I was like, no, but when the emergency is over, you can clock out. That creates an exception. And then we go back and we.
And it's just documentation. I mean, if we don't start having documentation for these things, then we're just, like you said, we're letting some people do it this way, some people do it that way. If we don't get some uniformity, then there's no set level of expectation. So we're, but you're, we're still looking at close to a hundred hours for someone at this point, which in this case, would take us down to under seventy hours available for the month to do the other HR functions, which we're considering to be quite essential right now, until we get everything up to date with employee files, evaluations, policies, handbook. I mean, that kind of stuff is going to take some time, too. So, I'm hoping that we can minimize that hundred-hour investment by using some sort of software. When there's got, I mean, there's definitely going to be, a financial investment, but it's going to pay for itself over that amount of time. I mean, that's, it's basically fifty percent of HR time to be spent on payroll at that, at that point.
Now, mind you, um, during the month of January, during that time period, like, we'd already kicked the W-2s out, but we're still trying to finish the quarterly reports. So that includes some of the quarterly reporting process.
But you also know what you're doing, as far as this particular method. And so, your speed at which you're putting out work may be faster than someone who's learning it, too. So, I mean, we're definitely talking about a good portion of their time invested in just the payroll function.
And I will keep track, again, in February as well, so that you can kind of see a month that doesn't have a quarterly report, or, you know, any.
And if we're going to continue to advertise for another month, I mean, you are prepared then to continue with that portion of the job. I guess I'm looking at it as, going back to some of the complaints that we had from the person that we hired. Um, if we are expecting that amount of output in the last week of the month, pretty much, I mean, that's, that's cumbersome. So if we don't have people from departments turning in their time cards regularly, that doesn't spread out that hundred hours that it takes to calculate everything over more than just that one particular week. So, you're on, I mean, if we're paying someone to be there, you're almost better to contract someone out to spend a hundred hours that week.
Yeah. The, the only major thing that's different is that person will have the forty hours to put towards it, where I don't necessarily have the forty hours. And in like what Deborah's situation, where she was at, because she was trying to do clerk's duties, too, that person didn't have the forty hours.
Right, because you're taking away answering the phone, fetching things for people, and.
But, but does that mean that she could do interviews during that last week? Or he, you know, whoever you would hire? No, that, that means, you know.
They have to block off their own time to recognize that that's that. You're right.
Yeah.
But again, that also brings us back to, what are our options with Comtech? You know, if we were, let's just say we keep once-a-month pay. If we were able to access and update the input information, you know, the data entry part of it, can we do that a week prior? And that way, when we expect them to have their first two weeks of time cards already turned in, half of that hourly calculation and input can be done.
That's my assumption. I need to find out more information. And I'll, I will make that a goal to do that. It's not going to happen this week.
No, no, I know, I know. I think we're in the next couple of months.
You know, what we did with the leave time was, we wanted to fix leave time, so we just made it a goal that two and a half days is what we're going to spend. So that's probably what I'll do, is just say, the first week in March, that's what I'll work with, is. Because it's easier for me if I have a deadline. And, you know, there's other aspects of my job that I say here, and I think, how did we get so imbalanced in our offices? But it's like, I can't complain about one office, because I'm holding them up, because I have a stack of deeds this big that needs to get done. But because it's not my priority, and I know it doesn't need to get done till November, I'm slowing them up. And creating a, a thing. And so, you know, I visited with Rhonda with ways that we could help with that, once I get caught up, to feel like I can get my head above water. But I just, I have to start telling you guys that I can't do certain things. And, and thus, I will do my statutory duties. And like I said, I will, I will get payroll done, but at some point in time, and I, I know that everybody disagrees or agrees with me in the fact that payroll is not really our, our duty, it's not our statutory duty to do payroll. And it, you know, because it has been dumped in our office, and it is what we do, and it's the same with the ambulance. And if I ever figure out a way to make that organized, I really think, once you hire an ambulance director, that we, we send that back down. Once we get a process where we can help them get that process, we send that back down and not make that a responsibility.
I mean, part of the purpose of getting paid more to your department head is because you have responsibility, which includes fiscal responsibility for your department's budget. Otherwise, why are you getting paid more? If, if, I mean, in the previous scenario, we were paying someone more who was taking a shift and working, and, and maybe making the schedule and doing some other coordinating duties, not the whole time we were employed, but some of it. And that is not, that is not all that is required of being a department head. So I definitely think that that should be controlled in the department.
Yeah.
And you can be a checking mechanism for it.
Well, and I think having the billing company will help with that, and make that a little bit easier for them to be able to handle. We just gotta get a, get a grasp on it. And I'm not so sure what the auditors want me to do is working.
So while we have you at the table, I also wanted to know, how soon can we move the commission room down the hall? And what can we do to get organized? Because I, all of my files from the last two years, I would love to be able to have access to at any given time, instead of me having to pull things out and research and haul them back and forth in my vehicle. I mean, I would like to have a filing cabinet down there, where when we put in information that we know we might need in the future, we can just pop it back out again, and then that's less research work that you have to do to pull things up for us.
I know, number one, I, I, I need to get internet in there. Number two, while we do that, I need to get a telephone. But does that mean you can't have, you can have a meeting there?
Yeah, we do it now without them. Well, no, you need it. Well, can you do the?
Yeah, I can't do wireless down there, I didn't realize it. But, um, there is a switch in there, and I can have them help me get it. Um, basically, we just need to clean up the office, and then we need to figure out something for our table, you know, whether it's, we bring this down. They do have a cabinet that they used to, to keep paper supplies in, that I think would be great for a laminate top to put on, and it has storage on the backside. And John Paul thinks it's too tall for you guys. Um, okay, I want you guys to go look at it, and kind of where it's at. But my thought was, was, um, Leann and Rhonda agreed to come down and kind of look, and they sat at it, Leann being short, and Rhonda being, um, the motherly figure that we have around here. But we thought twelve inches on each side, maybe eighteen inches on each side, if we could get a laminate top. I don't know what that costs. It may be cheaper just to buy a conference table. Um, but I feel like you guys need something other than. But maybe you're okay with this, I, I don't care. Um, but there is some options there. And then, um, the question was then, too, what do we do about seating for the, what we'll call the gallery? Because like all of these chairs, if we would take them down there, then what are we going to use here? And then the question is, is all these chairs are bent.
Do we have any chairs up in the storage area? Up in the.
We do not. We might have some wooden captain's chairs, um, but if we do, there's not very many of them. So then that would be another question.
Say again?
That's for selling some.
You're selling chairs?
For a dollar. They're, they're metal chairs.
Just like these?
Um, some of them are, they're different, they're slide. I mean, they're a metal chair, but they have a slide on the side, where the seat slides down.
They're sturdy and heavy, which is.
But we may be able to use them, because they're going to just sit still.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're just selling them for a dollar, well, donation of a dollar.
Is there, do you need that match?
Oh, yeah, they all, they all match.
Yeah, let's get a dozen matching ones and call it.
So, tho- those are the types of things. So if you guys want to go down and kind of look and see, um, we kind of spun the cabinet around. The other thought I had was, we have a couple of these desks, was, could we fit three desks in there, where you guys could each have your own desk, and, um, I, I know you guys, and Randy, you don't know this, but Aljo, they used to have a drawer. I think Alexis inherited a drawer that was packed full of stuff that she probably wasn't sure if she needed or didn't need.
Yeah, some of it was quite old, but, yeah.
Yeah. Um, so if you guys want to come down and look.
Yes, I think we should.
Let's, let's get this over with.
Okay.
What do we got left to do?
Um, I think that's everything on the agenda.
You want us to review what you gave us?
Yes.
We should just review this and come back next week or something, or?
We can. I, if you tell me something that you want to address right now, I mean, I can edit it as it sits. I just had Dawn print that out. I'm sorry, it had a third dead page that I didn't realize was there. Um, so it was a waste of paper. But basically, if you have some things that we want to address right now, I can edit it as it stands. I don't necessarily have anything else, except I did want to talk about, I, I would like the commission to give me permission to get on the agenda for the City Council of Lincoln as a commissioner, and, instead of as a, an individual citizen, and just ask them what their plan is to proceed with Mr. Grace and the contract that they have with him. Have you seen that contract?
The city?
Yes. Have you read that contract, Aljo? So there is a contract that exists between the City of Lincoln and John Grace, who currently owns Lincoln Park Manor, who is renting without pay, our facility for the nursing home. And the contract says that they will back him with a bond of up to three million, I believe it is, for him to break ground and build what would be a greenhouse-type concept on the city land that they own, where they put a lot in. And so, without knowing what the plans are, or where the city stands on that issue, I feel like we shouldn't really move much further into the future, um, without knowing that. You know, we need to know what their intention is. And I don't know when the contract expires, but they still have quite a few months on there, from what I remember. I believe it might even be till the end of this year, or somewhere toward the end of two thousand nineteen. So I would like the councils, or this commission's permission to schedule myself on the agenda and ask those questions, what the city intends to do with that contract with Mr. Grace.
You need a motion.
I would like that. That way, when I go, it's not me as an individual, but that I have your permission to. I'm not going to give them any decisions of ours, we don't have any decisions to make. But I want to ask those questions on our behalf, not just me as a, an, and a concerned citizen. You know, I want to say that the commission wants to know what the city is intending to do with the contract that they have with Mr. Grace. Would that be okay?
I have no problem. I have no problem. I'll make a motion to, uh, have Alexis go as commissioner representative to the, uh, Lincoln City Council to address them on this issue that you brought up, which was, uh.
Yes, the.
Whatever.
Current, uh, the, the contract that exists between like the City of Lincoln and, and John Grace.
I'm sorry.
I have a motion and a second to send me to the City Council to ask questions regarding their contract with Mr. Grace, on behalf of the County Commission. Any further discussion? Those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. All in favor? Okay, I will take any corrections, suggestions you want to deal with on the, what I, what I read to you last week, and then there were some things that I added or tweaked or changed. And what I did not take out is that section in the middle about planning some public talks to receive input and ideas. I know that you had both said that you don't intend on doing that. Um.
What was that?
Just in the middle there, in this middle section, I wrote about.
Oh.
Look, uh, to.
Oh, well.
Intending on having public, a public meeting about it, talks, I called it talks in there, but.
Yeah.
I know that last week, you had both kind of said that you're not really in favor of doing that at this point.
Well, yeah, I, because I don't know what we would accomplish. But this letter's good, uh. I don't know if we have a meeting, what, uh, we would say any different than this letter. You know? And then maybe we would get, we should get input from people, but I don't know, if that's productive, I don't know. Some are going to be for it, some are.
I think you could, you, if you wanted to leave that, I think you could say, future.
Okay.
In the future, the commission may be, maybe.
Planning some public talks to the. We will be planning in the future, yeah. That puts it off, and then we'll let me know more.
Okay. And at the end, I wrote about how they could correspond with the commission, and I gave the address, so maybe they would mail in something.
I guess, when you're, you're back there, um, you know, I've got correspondence, I, I have no problem with them visiting with me. You know, they don't have to have it in writing.
Oh, or call, or call.
Yeah, or, or writing, you know. Uh, you know, I, I don't know that, that kind of indicates that we will only take correspondence.
Yes, I'm sorry, and I can fix that.
And then, right above that sentence, Alexis. You have, the commission is in need of public opinion and commitment to continue funding. I think you, you, I, I would just say, continue funding of, of a nursing home facility, or of, of the nursing home facility. Instead of saying subsidy, uh, you know, I, I, it's going to have to be funded.
Okay, I'll just put comma, I'll just take that out, and put regardless of. I'll just jump down to regardless of management firms. I guess I wanted it to be clear, I, you know, we have, we have a catch-twenty-two. We don't really want to tell anyone and everyone that we are going to continue to fund it, because we'd like to find someone that would need very minimal help doing so. But we also don't want to tell the public that we're not going to offer any help to keep it on its feet, regardless of who is going to take on the responsibility of managing it. Does that make sense? So, yeah, I, I just took out that part, then.
Okay. And then, oh, I don't know.
You have, you have.
You see where it says, web fund?
Did I not finish that thought?
No, no, I, I just, I want to, I, I would suggest.
Where, tell me where.
Middle paragraphs in the last page. Keep going down the middle paragraph, right there.
In the second column, do you have columns?
Second column.
Right at the bottom, the second column. Web fund may be, I would take out only.
Okay.
Because it's going to be the monetary source. And then, I would take out from, from an order. I think you were just saying, to derive immediate expenses to cover.
Okay.
And then, you brought up the, the City Council, and in the first column of that page, about, I don't know, ten, twelve lines down, you have we. I don't.
Yeah, I shouldn't have put we. Take out we.
Yeah. Make it, it has.
It is yet.
It is yet to be determined, yeah.
Yes, good, yep, that's a good connection.
Okay. Okay. Then you're not going to like me on the first page.
Go ahead.
Where you say, in that second column, local taxes. And I told you, I didn't like that word, subsidize, because I don't feel some of those are a subsidy. Those are things that the landlord is responsible for. So I would just say, local taxes, uh, are being used for the operation of the nursing facility in, and then list the examples. I, you know, you've, you've got the good examples.
I would just say then, local taxes are used in the operation of the nursing home.
For.
For the, okay. Okay, local taxes are used for the operation of the nursing home facility in the fashion of absorption of yearly property tax, insurance on the building, purchases of equipment, fixtures and amenities, repairs, labor, and recurring maintenance overhead. I guess my problem with not saying subsidy is, it is a subsidy, because we choose to put money into that every year. And there are hundreds of thousands of privately-owned nursing homes that don't get any assistance outside of their.
Are they owned by the county? Are the buildings owned by the county?
Well, regardless, we paid someone to flush the toilet there. So, what I'm.
You know, you know, if you're renting a home, and the toilet doesn't work, are you going to fix it, or are you going to call the landlord and, and tell him to fix it?
I think it depends on what your lease says. And part of our problem is, our lease was so poorly constructed.
Our lease says that we're doing that. You know, that's basically what it says.
But that, but that in essence, I'm going to change it, because I want your permission. But my argument is that we are subsidizing someone because they aren't having to pay out of their pocket for normal things. because they aren't having to pay out of their pocket for normal things like fixing of certain things be, just like, okay, for example, we're paying to, to drain or, or flush the sewage system.
The grease trap.
The grease trap, okay.
We're, we're doing that.
But, but that is not, but that's a mechan, we're not creating the grease.
We're gonna create the grease. No, I, I agree with you there. That.
Okay, and also.
That one could be, that one could be taken both ways, but the property tax, that's your responsibility. If you own the building.
I agree with that.
You know, that's your, you know, and, you know, I get a check from the government for social security. Is that a subsidy?
Well, you were supposed to have paid for it. They aren't paying rent.
But, but I, I, I have already gained more from my state retirement than I've ever paid any to, you know? You know, that, that, that's away those things.
Well, then in that case, then yes, it is a subsidy.
If you live long enough, if you live long enough, you're gonna out, outlive that. The other thing is that, uh, they paid, uh, I guess I got a subsidy from the government because, uh, I owned cattle in May and we had a drought. That was a subsidy, right? You know, but that isn't what it says, you know? It's, you know, so I, you know, to me, I guess that word has a connotation that I think is, is used when you don't like things and when you want things, then it's not used, I guess, is what I'm, I'm saying. But that's beside the point. Alexis, it, it is, it's very good. Then the next pair of sentences, Alexis.
Well, hold on. While you're on that topic, before I forget, Dawn, could you please verify the last time you received your, received your rent payment? Because I wanted to put that in here, but I wasn't, I thought it was February of last year or March, maybe? So I wanted to put, I wanted to add that in and then not be wrong about the date, so, okay, go ahead with your next.
Okay, then, then that next sentence?
Mm-hmm.
I would just say recent county budgets have included a yearly general line item for a hundred and twenty thousand. And then we have, we have by the commission order.
Recent, okay.
I don't know that it is a commi, uh, it is, the commissioners decided that, but that's understood that the general budget was graded by the county commissioners.
Well, I don't think it's understood to your average reader. I'm trying to write this as if I know, the reader knows nothing about how things are constructed. You know, cause you've been involved for more than a decade. You know, because you're involved now in learning. I know because I've at least seen all of this unfold. I, I was trying to give the reader a chance.
I'm, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna disagree with you.
Yeah.
But I mean, it, the general, the general budget is, is from the county commissioners. It's kind of one of our discretionary.
But I think that's maybe not understood on a larger scale. From, from the discussions that I've had with people, you know, it's like, well, how much do you spend on that? And then, and then why or who did that or is that, you know, does the state say that you have to or what is the law or, and basically we're just saying it's our decision to do that.
It's our decision to do this. Okay, then over there on your list of stuff, which is good. No problem. I think it's good, except if you're going to list certain dollar amount. You list it for everybody.
I had that right here as a note on his. I, 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 right, I needed to get with Dawn because I don't know.
And, and the, on the one on the hospital
Mm-hmm.
and the other two, there is no dollar amount there cause the hospital takes thirteen mils, whatever it comes up to. Okay, it is around five hundred thousand, but.
That could change.
That, that, that's not, and the link, and the same with economic development. There's just two mils regardless.
That is true.
And that could vary year to year based on.
Right, and the senior services is supposed to be two mils, but it's up two. And we actually found out the county hospital is actually up two. So I was just listing, and those aren't even accurate because I was just guessing from memory what the, what the dollar.
Yeah, and, and I guess, I guess, you know, you don't need to list any of those if you don't want to. You can just write what the mils are, cause that's what, that's what they voted, you know? Then down there you have, uh, well, as I said, pointed out, the NCKF, no.
North Central Kansas Mental Health.
Oh, that's, no, no, that's, is that what it's called?
Where are you? Are you NC?
The mental health, yeah.
The third one down.
Uh, but that's not what it's called, is it?
North Central Kansas Mental Health, I think, is what the total says. So that's the acronym is NCKM.
I didn't think that. I thought it was.
Something regional, I don't know.
Did you feel when you were reading?
Though, the other is, Flynn Hills needs to be on there too, cause we do.
Oh, Flynn Hills Area Agency on Aging?
Flynn Hills, yeah, with area council on aging.
Okay.
Did what, what did you say?
Um.
Good when I read this.
I, when you read it, did you feel like it gave a synopsis? I was trying to go in an order.
Yeah, trying to give a history.
In a chronological order.
History of the, it's a complex thing.
The why and how we've been involved.
How, how we got into this and it's because of, really Kristen, she had a big fine, right? And then that made her one to sell out, right? And then we got Grace in here, right?
Abandoned, abandoned cemeteries, well, I mean, this list goes on and on, but that's, uh.
One thing you could say down here is, do we, uh, do we want to piss, piss Mr. Grace off?
It's just, Dawn? Is she there?
No, I think she went to look for the last rent payment.
Like you, you put her threats to close the doors have been whispered. Do we want to, that kind of sounds attackative to him?
Well, I'll tell you what.
Do we want to do that? Maybe, maybe we do, but I don't know.
The reason why I put that in there is because that's one of the biggest concerns. The people who work there or have loved ones there are tired of hearing how it's going to close. And we have never said that.
Yeah.
And it's always come from the other party. And I guess I want to address that because.
You want to say, well, maybe that's good to say that then. I just didn't know.
With a person, a colleague on the phone while, I had a relative up there and I said, that's not coming from here. I don't know where it's coming from.
Right.
I don't.
Well, even the employees have been told that that's on the horizon. And what I'm saying is it's not coming from us. So let's not hide the fact that it's out there as a rumor. Let's just say that that's, and, and if you read it, it, what it says is because the organization who runs that place is claiming that they're financially destitute and want us to basically buy out their business that is in debt, you know, they're holding our license hostage. Uh, that's what I'd really like to write, you know, um.
Also is that, we wanna, I, I had some concerns from some people with asking if we would take that license over Lincoln County, like if we would buy, take this over, then would be, would be, we'd be in a jeopardy then for liability? Like, like Kristen was fined whatever, what, ten fifty thousand?
And that's her license.
That was her license, but if we take that over.
Yes, that becomes our liability.
That's something we really think about. Do we want that?
Which I think is why we've been advised multiple times by our, our legal team to get a management company.
And then it would be their liability?
Yes.
Okay, they would really hold the license.
Except, we need to figure out.
Ability.
What?
No.
Except for.
And that's not true because, especially because it depends on what type of fine it is or what the fine was, which, which, um, infraction the, the money was assigned to. We've never been fined monetarily for the building.
Yeah.
That, that was part of it.
No, the actual, no, I called, I spoke to everyone at KDS.
The gal that told me, I'm from CMS that I talked to. Cause I told her that's what I wanted to do and she said, we aren't gonna do that.
Well, I'm not gonna argue with you because I knew, know that they say whatever they want when you call them.
Well, if we get to that point in the future, we gotta think about that, right?
Yes.
About liability to us or that.
So March, March, two thousand eighteen.
Um.
But that was for February, correct?
Yeah, for January. It has on the receipt. Cause I didn't know how you had that ordered.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, okay.
That column, Alexis, and we've already talked about this, the Lincoln County, non-governmental.
Yes.
Those are governmental services. I mean, the government runs them, basically. The hospital, it's a governmental hospital. Uh, I just wondered if you output Lincoln County, uh, general, Lincoln County, general fund, funds or funding. And then you have my vote and those are, and then the other one is county commission, the commission.
I'll just take it out. Just, I'll just put Lincoln County subsidies two thousand and two, yeah. You want me to put funding?
I would just, I would just say, uh, the Lincoln County, maybe you just need to say Lincoln County.
Yes.
And then the commission, and then down there it said commission selection funding, maybe you just say, um, well, maybe that's good, not selection, I guess is the word.
I guess I was just trying to differentiate between what the.
Yeah, I understand. They, they need to be separate. One of them is they're voted in
Uh-huh.
and these, this was at the discretion, maybe say the discretion of the commission.
Lincoln County, yeah, public voted levies. There you go.
Yeah, I mean, those, those we don't have anything to say about. You got, uh, the fair, maybe I'll say the county fair in case they wonder what that is.
Yes, good idea.
Dawn?
Yes.
Central mental, Central Kansas Mental Health, that's what it is.
Central Kansas, yeah. Not North Central.
It's Central Kansas Mental Health.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's not North Central.
No, it's Central Kansas.
CK.
CK, yeah, I know.
Yeah, Central Kansas Mental Health Center. There's a C in that.
A C in the end. Okay, sorry, thank you.
I knew that's, I knew that wasn't right, but I couldn't think what it was.
What's NCRPC?
That's North Central Regional.
Oh, Regional Planning Commission, right, yeah.
And CASA we talked about today.
Right, right, yeah.
And LEP is the sewer that he ran.
Oh, yeah.
And then the rec commission.
Yeah, right, right. No, I think the rest, what you wrote there is good, Alexis, overall, you, it's a good.
Yeah, I think it is too.
A document of, you know, well, we got, where, it shows a history of where we're at here. And it's very confident.
It also points out the fact of why this decision is not.
Easy.
Easy.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Okay, so I'm gonna write, the county is owed rent.
Just say the last rent payment received by the county was.
But listen to how confusing this is. We received the payment in March, but it was for January. So we really are owed all of two thousand eighteen except for one month.
Well, you say the, the last rent payment, the January rent was the last rent payment received.
Two thousand eighteen, so we're a year behind.
Yes.
Wow. Well, how much is it for?
Thirty-five thousand dollars, more and more.
Wow, thirty-five hundred, yeah, thirty-five hundred.
Hundred times.
Time, three, three to, three, three to, to three thousand five hundred. Three to four thousand per month for a whole year, I should say.
Yeah, but it's on the, based on the occupants, so, but it's been low here lately, so it's been base.
Okay, January of two thousand eighteen was the last month of rent the county received. That's better. And I just wanted to, I mean, I'm sure you read all that. I wanted to point out that we have been advised by our legal team because I think a lot of people were still questioning, the last time we really had a public meeting was when we were approached by that nonprofit group that came forward. And while they meant well and wanted to see things progress, we've really been advised that we can't just hand over an operation of this magnitude to the local group who wants to do that. I mean, it's just, it's not really possible. The attorneys don't even think the state would recognize that, you know what I mean? I, I didn't want to exclude mentioning that scenario because it felt as if when they came forward, we just ignored them and we've gone behind closed doors ever since. And I've been approached about that. You know, what are you gonna do? And those people put all that time and effort into, even the committee that I was working with for the Lincoln Park Manor situation was talking about how, you know, they've already had, they already have a group, they already have things in the works, but really, once we started having these talks with our attorneys, we realized that that, we can't just do that. And so to address that, I wanted to make sure that they know that it's, it's not a personal decision, it's a legal decision. Does that make sense?
It was a money decision too.
Well, I mean, yeah, but.
I mean, that's.
Just like you wouldn't turn over your cattle operation to your underage grandchild who can't even write his own checkbook, you know, you, you wouldn't turn over a multimillion dollar operation to a group who wants to do well, but doesn't have any means to facilitate it. Do you know what I'm saying? They don't have the capacity to get a license or anything like that, so. Okay, if that is it, I will re-mail this to Dawn. And then Dawn, what I would like your help with is to fix some of the numbers on there that I listed, the amount of money that we had dedicated out of the two thousand nineteen budget to those particular line items. And then how would you like?
I can read them off, I got mine.
Okay. How would you like to do this? I mean, do we want to do a mailer ourselves? Or do, how, how would you like to?
No, you mean.
I feel like we're doing ourselves a disservice by just printing it once in the Lincoln Sentinel.
I think we could put it in there, but also put it other places, maybe individual flyers, of course, then you, I don't know. If you do individual flyers, you can mail to everybody in town.
I would. Me personally, I would. Because they're the taxpayers that are paying in, you know, or at least someone who owns that land.
Okay, you ready Alexis?
Yes, sir.
Okay, mental health, sixteen thousand six hundred.
Okay.
Historical society, forty-five hundred.
Okay.
Uh, soil conservation, twenty-two thousand.
Okay.
OCCK, seven thousand five hundred and sixty-nine dollars. CASA is seven thousand. Juvenile detention is five hundred. Abandoned cemeteries is two thousand. LEP is thirteen thousand five hundred. Rec commission is twenty-five thousand. Fair board is ten thousand. North Central Regional Planning is thirty-five hundred. You have transportation bus?
Yes.
Twenty thousand. What'd that miss?
Um, okay.
I should, I don't know.
No, North Central Regional Flynn Hills.
Oh.
I guess we did not fund them directly out of the general fund this year, did we?
No, that came out of the health department.
It used to.
Fourteen forties, or fourteen oh fours.
Flynn Hills.
One thousand four hundred and four?
Yeah, that's what it happened. I think it was less this year.
But it wasn't for, I'm listing two thousand nineteen, so we didn't put out anything out of the general fund?
No.
Okay, I'm gonna take it out.
All right, just take it out.
Um.
Did we have the, did we do anything for Flynn Hills or did?
Flynn Hills Area Agency on Aging.
That came out of the.
Just that Senior Care Act money came out of the health department.
There's another one that we had to do.
That administrative fee, the council on aging has been paying a hundred percent of for the last couple of years.
Okay, what was the rescue squad dollar amount then?
Well, it's half a mil.
I know, but.
You're not exact.
Please, because if, I have to list the dollar amount for the senior services, cause it's not taking two mils.
Exactly right though, is it?
Well, it is because that's all we will pay them. If the value increased after June.
What if it didn't increase? Oh, okay.
Um, it'd be the amount that's over gendered.
Okay, all right. What do you want to know? Rescue squad, twenty-nine thousand three hundred and twenty-two dollars.
Twenty-nine, three hundred and.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two. Okay, and we did seventy-five thousand flat for senior services. What does two mils come out to be for economic development?
One hundred and seventeen thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine dollars.
Okay, and then what is the, the hospital's ten mil equal this year?
Five hundred and eighty-six thousand, four hundred and forty-four dollars.
Okay. All right, I think I have.
How much would that accumulate?
One seventeen, two eighty-nine.
Okay, thank you.
Uh-huh.
We didn't do senior services. We didn't do senior services yet, huh?
It's seventy-five thousand flat, cause we chose a dollar amount.
Oh, yeah, you got it.
It didn't come out to the, it would actually be two mils at a hundred and seventeen, just like the other one.
Right, okay.
Over that budget now.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, I will get this to Dawn then, and I, I don't intend on making any more changes, so we can decide next week how we're gonna put it out, I suppose.
We could do a flyer, or maybe in the paper too, huh?
I forget, but it.
But some people may not have a mailing, mailing address, you know, some people don't have a mailing address.
It needs to go in the paper, because.
Yes, oh, definitely, and I would like to do so, and LinkedIn.
I, I think you, maybe you just do that now, and then.
Okay, and then we'll worry about doing a mail out later.
You're tri-fold, can you tri-fold? Okay.
Okay, so we'll have a.
You're in charge.
After the next meeting.
Thanks for doing it, Alexis, that's it.
No, thank you, I'm glad you brought it up, because I know a lot of people.
It's a good, it's a good, you wrote a major paper there, that's good.
So I actually came across, I was doing some filing, and, for this, and I came across one of the advertisements that John Grace had put out for, um, on behalf of Lincoln Park Manor, and I found it interesting, um, because, you know, there have been all these proposals for this, that, and the other thing, and, and I'll bring in the flyer, but it actually talks about what the, what their intentions were to do, you know, to build new facilities, or, or to, to actually relinquish use of the current facility as a nursing home altogether, and I just find that interesting, because if that's ultimately the goal, then we need to know that, and I, and it kind of brought to mind, what is the deal with the city, because if that's going to all go forward, are we gonna be in competition with a brand-new facility in the city center of Lincoln, running an old facility up there, and a new facility down here, are we going to be the owners of a, a competitive business in that market for this area? I mean, it's kind of a concern, don't you think?
Maybe it was a big concern of mine when he did that.
Well, what if it's still, what if it's still a viable option?
Well, then we're, we're gonna be out.
Yeah, I agree.
There's no sense in us pumping more money into that.
Right.
Okay.
I mean, when we started the renovations, there was no.
Sorry?
The city council, where are you going?
Well, I guess I'll call and get on the agenda, uh-huh, are they, are they the first month, first weekend month or second?
I think it's the second Monday.
I can never remember, school is one.
The school is always the first.
School's the first, so they're the second Monday, okay, but then someone told me they thought that the cities were changing their Monday meetings, is that true?
I have a first.
Okay.
Thank you, Alexis.
Yes, all right, I will adjourn the meeting until, oh, we will have an end of the month on the twenty-eighth, correct, Dawn?
And I can't be there, I'm gonna be out of town, but I'll call in at, I'll call in, Dawn's give her number on her phone, like you did last time, I was, and that's at ten here, so nine I'll call, I'm gonna be out of town.
So we will, we will meet again on the twenty-eighth, ten AM, in the basement meeting room of the courthouse.
That'll just be for bills, right?
For the end of the month, the accounts payable and payroll.
Okay.
Thank you.